Ask me says, well, honey, how is your life? And I said, well, I got one. And he goes, I said, but there's no regulation on how tall it can be.
Oh. Twelve foot tall. That's a lot of honey. What do you get out of it? All that honey, what do you do with it?
I give it away. I've been, I've been just giving it away to people, yeah. neighbors, people in my buy nothing group, friends, family, yeah.
That's very nice. Are we lining up the two doors? Is that why the doorbell rang the other day? Was somebody with an empty bucket?
Yeah.
Very cool, very cool. Well, that is phenomenal.
Yeah, I hear a lot of people are having it and the bumblebees, I don't know if you guys are seeing, the biggest bumblebees I've ever seen this year in a single.
Huge.
They're like birds, they're huge.
I had a monarch butterfly on my milkweed today.
Wow.
First one of the year.
Very cool. That's cool. Very cool.
My favorite.
I love hudders.
I know, and I do have a hummingbird every morning that comes to visit while I'm having coffee on the back porch. It comes just to kind of look me in the eye. But the.
Yeah.
The bumblebee landed on a, um, one of the snap dragons and he was so heavy that he rolled it to the ground.
That one. That one is called chubby, huh?
Chubby. Husky.
Husky, huh? I like it, yeah. I mean, we were meeting in person, I know I could go, oh, wow, I really like honey bar. We can gift her in for their skin now. Oh, yeah. Thinking of which, I need to ask this question, Kathy. Can start having, um, award meetings in person now? You can, you can. And that's just, um, make sure you tell people who aren't vaccinated to think about if they'd like to wear a mask. It's obviously their choice, but we look at that a minute. So.
Yes.
Yeah, you can. And where you might want to stay virtual or start, if more people can access your meetings, it's really up to you.
Okay.
And we'll be back at source. Some people want to be in person and some people say, no, let's keep it virtual and a glass or a iceberg or. I've heard that too, but please, so it's really up to you, however you want to do it.
Okay.
Cool. I'm going quiet.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the virtual study session of the city council in Lakewood, Colorado, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, the phone number tonight for public input is one, two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two. Webinar ID nine, five, zero, three, three, two, six, eight, two, seven, nine. You'll press pound after entering that ID and pound once more to enter the meeting. Press star nine to request to speak. Star six to unmute. I will now ask the clerk, please call roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Eta.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I am here.
LeBure.
Here.
And Harrison.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome everybody who's joining us this evening. We have a informational night. There's no ask for council action on any of the items. And we have three presentations that we'll just start to go into right away, with the first being item three, presentation, economic development, comprehensive overview and update. And I will turn this over to our economic development director, Mr. Robert Smith, who has had quite a busy couple of weeks in front of city council. So floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, they're gonna have to make a chair with my name on it, I think, at this point. So thank you so much for giving me a little bit more time on the agenda, very much appreciated. As you know, I get very excited about economic development. I think that I have the greatest job on the whole planet and, and I, I truly believe that. And so love to be able to share a lot of that excitement with you, um, this evening. So I'm gonna start it off, though, with some other folks talking about economic development. And if you give me just a second, I will start that screen going and let some other folks tell you about some things going on in the city. I assume we can see this, uh, black screen, yes? Thumbs up? All right, let's just let it go.
I'm Katie Faltes, and in twenty twenty, the Lakewood Economic Development Team built a program from the ground up, which serviced three point three million dollars of Paris funds for Lakewood businesses. We had three hundred and seventy-seven businesses receive grants.
My name's Kevin Jenkins, CEO of St. Anthony Hospital as part of the JRL. St. Anthony Hospital has served this community for all now close to a hundred and thirty years. I'm privileged and honored to be part of such a great area and great community, where we have the chance to, uh, provide healthcare to anyone that comes to our doors. St. Anthony Hospital during the last year and a half has served over twelve hundred COVID patients. And we even went and sent some of our nursing staff to Florida and other hotspots to serve the communities in those areas as well. As a level one trauma center, we're excited that we can take part in serving not only the communities of Lakewood, but also the communities across the state and neighboring states to provide state of the art, best care possible to help our communities work.
I'm Laura Mitty with Lakewood Economic Development. In Lakewood, we support workforce, not human workers. We're doing an internship program, preparing students with businesses to help both the students and the businesses succeed.
My name is Kaylin Brooks, and I'm a graduating senior here at Colorado Christian University. And for my senior internship, I worked with the South Lakewood Business Association here in Lakewood, Colorado. I helped create marketing content and increase outreach, ultimately to strengthen the businesses here in Lakewood.
My name is, uh, Vara Pusadman. Uh, I work for Turmo Blood and Cell Technologies here in Lakewood, Colorado. We have been in the community for more than fifty years. We make medical devices that saves and sustain lives. Our products during the COVID pandemic have saved a lot of lives.
Hi, I'm Gina Cullen, president and CEO for Dyn electric company in Colorado. We have been in business here since nineteen fifty-one, and we've been at our, uh, headquarters in Lakewood at three forty-five Sheridan since nineteen eighty-one. So we've been around a little while. Uh, we are a local union electrical contractor. We employ about a hundred and eighty-five skilled craft electricians, uh, equipment operators, apprentices, traffic techs, communication techs, and, um, as well as technical professionals, um, administrative and, and management staff. Um, we are, when you think about electrical work and what we do, a lot of, a lot of what we do is above the ceiling, below the floors, behind the walls, underground, just don't see it, things just magically work. Um, think about, uh, the data centers that store your, uh, personal and financial information. The healthcare and hospital facilities that operate twenty-four, seven to support the health of Coloradans. The manufacturing plants throughout Colorado that provide us our beer and burgers, milk, um, pet food and spacecraft, uh, medical apparatus and wind and solar components. Um, as well as our, uh, planes, trains and automobile infrastructure that help us get us all where we need to go. These are the types of, um, facilities and projects that, that our people are working on every day.
Hi, I'm Robert Smith with Lakewood's Economic Development Team. And we measure a lot of things in economic development, but almost all of them distill down to three very basic measurements. The first is jobs. We want jobs in our area. The second is capital investment. We want to attract private sector capital investment into our community. And the third one is a rise in the tax base. With the tax base going up, we're able to support the community in a lot of different ways.
Hello, I'm Austin Adamson, co-owner and distiller here at Palmer Peak Distillery in Lakewood, Colorado. We got started in November of twenty nineteen. We're making rums, gins, whiskey and have a, a cute little tasting room attached to our production. Uh, unfortunately, we got started right as the pandemic went into lockdown, but during that time, we were able to pivot. We were able to make hand sanitizer, um, give it away to the community at no cost to them, filling containers that they brought for us to fill. We were able to leverage the different programs that the city of Lakewood brought to us, like cock, cocktails to go and temporary outdoor seating arrangements. So during the summer, we were still able to service people outside, even though we didn't have a permanent patio. As the weather is improving, as lockdowns and restrictions are lifting, we're able to focus on the customers and, and making the drinking liquor once again. We are focusing on summer movie nights, um, bringing the community together to watch movie and, and share drinks. We are back to indoor capacity, uh, full capacity indoors. And we are, uh, looking to bring new spirits and, and limited releases out, uh, to liquor stores and restaurants as well.
Hi, my name is Ivy Pham.
Hello, I'm John Pham.
We're the owners over here at Chicken Chicken at two seventy-five Southeast Boulevard. We are a fast casual fried chicken restaurant with a menu that focuses on fresh and quality ingredients. With the support of Lakewood Economic Development for the community, we were able to meet the challenges that every business faced during the pandemic.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach Lofford. I own Rods and Bots Movie Car Museum located in Colorado Mill Hall, and we are now open. We have over sixty vehicles in here, all your favorite childhood memories. We've got speed, we have Batmobile, we've got Ghostbusters, we've got Mystery Machine, the whole gang is here. So come down and visit us.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Southen, welcome to the city of Lakewood. One of the pillars we focus on is attraction. We do that by focusing on primary employers, retail entities and cultural amenities. As many of you know, I dub myself the data queen in our city and we use that to our great advantage. We tout demographics, industry trends and our evolving corridors to bring businesses here for you. Your first job, your next job, your favorite place to eat. But we do all of that by focusing on a target industry list as well as lifestyle industry list to add to a well-rounded economic base in the city of Lakewood. We look forward to speaking to you, we look forward to welcoming you, we are glad you're here.
Lakewood, we're coming back strong.
Lakewood, we're coming back strong.
Lakewood, we're coming back strong.
We're coming back strong.
Coming back strong.
Lakewood, we are coming back strong.
Lakewood, we're coming back strong.
Lakewood, we're coming back strong.
Lakewood, we are coming back strong.
Coming back strong.
Lakewood, we're coming back strong.
All right, well, that's one of the reasons why I have the greatest job on the planet. Uh, you know, I get to work with people who are very aspirational and see some hands coming up there doing some jazz hands, I appreciate that very much. But, uh, those are the kinds of folks that we're working with and they mentioned some of the things that, uh, we're gonna be mentioning here during this, uh, presentation. I, uh, uh, you know, as I say, I get very excited about things and I'll talk really fast, but my goal is to, uh, give a, a quick presentation here and then take any questions that you might have about what we're doing economic development wise. Give me just a second here to share my screen once again. And we will go here and I will begin this slideshow. I assume everybody can see that, uh, title page, correct? Well, let's just get right to economic development on this nineteenth day of July. Started off with the, uh, community profile. It's this document right here. Uh, you can have access to this anywhere in the, uh, in the city, have to send it out to folks in here. Um, basic information about the Lakewood community, um, in this profile, forty-four square miles. Interestingly enough, the city of San Francisco is about forty-four square miles. It's forty-six and, uh, but a lot of that's underwater. So, uh, about the same size as the city of San Francisco, about seventy-five hundred businesses you could see at the bottom of that, uh, uh, indicator right there on that slide. Uh, we often talk about the big three. I mentioned this in the top of the video that was on there. Essentially, we measure a lot of different things and we'll talk about those measures, but they all boil down to really three basic things. That's jobs, jobs in the area, uh, capital investment and growth in the tax base. Jobs are the fundamental unit of an economic development system, our economic system. Uh, and so that's one of the things that we focus on. We'll talk more about jobs in just a moment. Um, capital investment, that's bringing dollars, private sector dollars into our community. A lot of folks view the comprehensive plan as a guide to how the community will develop over time. We a lot of times look at it as a performer or an invitation for private sector investment. If we're gonna get to where we want to go aspirationally, we're gonna need not only millions of dollars in public sector investment, we're gonna need billions of dollars of private sector investment to get us to where we want to go. And then that third one is the tax base. I want to take just a moment here to make sure that there's a distinction between the tax rate and the tax base. We have no real desire to have the tax rate go up. In fact, that works against us most of the time. Tax base going up is really a function of transactions. If we have more businesses, if we have businesses doing, uh, additional transactions, we raise that tax base up and that's what allows us to provide some of those community services, um, that you, uh, are, that we, that make our community great. Uh, we focus on four basic areas in there. We refer to them as gears. Some people might refer to them as, uh, pillars or that sort of a thing. Whatever your metaphor, these are the foundations of where we, uh, organize our businesses. That green gear at the top with the, uh, guy with the key to the city, that's the attraction gear. We're trying to attract businesses into the city, businesses that aren't here already. Maybe some of them you know, maybe some of them may be new to you. With that blue gear that's on there, that's the business retention and expansion. That's working with existing businesses. And, uh, we do that pretty much on a plus one sort of a basis. So one more job, one more square foot leased, one more sale. How do we get our businesses to expand and grow right here in the city of Lakewood? That red gear has to do with improving our, our, uh, folks here, the Lakewoodians in our community. Um, and we do that with kind of a two-pronged approach on this gear. It's work for development and entrepreneurialism. Entrepreneurialism is one of those great words that if you get the ability to spell it in the game of Scrabble, you undoubtedly will win right off the bat. Entrepreneurialism simply means starting your own business or getting your own business up and off the ground. We like to do that as well as getting folks, uh, ready for the jobs of tomorrow. That purple gear that's down at the bottom, that's kind of rocking back and forth, that's marketing and communications. Our job is to tell the world about what a great place Lakewood is for business. Now, that's a little bit different messaging than it's a great place to live or a great place to play, a great place to recreate. Doing, uh, being a great place for business means that you can be successful as a business here in the city. So you get all those gears working together and the well-oiled machine of the local economy comes together and we succeed. That's what we're shooting for. I'll also mention that there's two other areas that the Economic Development Office works on. Uh, one is the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority, which is our, our Urban Renewal Authority, as well as we, uh, facilitate, uh, the Housing Policy Commission or the HPC, which is, uh, essentially a subset or a subcommittee of the council, we're working with policy issues. We have a strategic plan that we follow and, uh, and many of you received a copy of this in your in-mail boxes, a printed copy. Also sent you a digital, happy to send the digital to any constituent that would like to receive it. Um, all they have to do is email me and say, I'd like to get a copy, we'll email it right back. The strategic plan has three years in it. Those three years, of course, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty have the results associated with the strategies and tactics that we were using in those years to advance the economic development goals, um, as well as, uh, what we call the economic metrics of our, of our local economy. Twenty twenty-one has the plan that we're working on now, the strategy and tactics that we're, uh, incorporating into our everyday work now till the end of the year. And then, of course, when we turn over to twenty twenty-two, we'll put the results of the twenty twenty-one strategic plan down there. Just to give you an idea of how that's organized, because I know everybody will dig in and take a look at all of those pages of information on, on what we're doing there. We have strategies which are kind of overarching sorts of things that we're trying to accomplish. There's four areas, there's three strategies under each of those areas. You do that math real quickly, that's three times four, that's twelve. We often refer to those twelve as the dizzy dozen. And the reason we call them the dizzy dozen is because they're so well-honed, so on target, they make your head spin. That's why we call them the dizzy dozen. You can see one of the, uh, ta, our, excuse me, strategies is up there, that's strategy two under attraction. Tactics are, uh, below that and there are several tactics under each of those strategies. This one happens to be the fifth tactic under the attraction strategy. And you see how we fill it in over the course of time. So identify the stra, strategy or the tactic, we identify what success looks like, we identify how we're going to measure that, and then we identify the outcomes and results. And as you dig through those, uh, those strategy documents, you'll see all of those in place. You'll also see something that we think is pretty cool because we're a bunch of data geeks over here. We love to see, to see, uh, a lot of data and that's the economic metrics. Lots of graphs, lots of tables, lots of information about how we succeeded or didn't succeed, um, the way in which our, uh, economy responded to the things that we were working on. Those are all in that, uh, strategic plan as well. So let's get back to talking a little bit about businesses. Let's talk a little bit about jobs with those businesses. You can see right in there, any self-respecting goldfish, if you put it in a bigger bowl, it gets bigger, grows. It responds to its environment. So hopefully we're helping to create an environment where all of our goldfish, uh, can grow and get bigger. Eighty-eight percent of our businesses have twenty or fewer employees. And just to give you a kind of a perspective on that, the feds define small business as four hundred and ninety-nine employees or fewer. Large businesses happen when you get to five hundred employees. So we've only got about eight or nine large businesses here in the city of Lakewood. All the rest are little mighty businesses working to make things happen. About eight out of ten of our businesses have ten or fewer employees and a full quarter of them are just single-person shops. So we're getting a lot done with folks working in these entities that are there. Let me, uh, talk a little bit about jobs and you have to, in order to understand the twenty twenty job situation, you've got to understand a little bit about the national employment statistics. And we have some familiarity with it, we know that twenty twenty was a disastrous year. What you see there on the screen is January of twenty nineteen through January of twenty twenty, every month up on that screen. You see hovering around that zero million, uh, number, those little blue blits on there. That means that we got two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand jobs, uh, added to the economy each month nationally, all the way up till we got to the month of March. And then when you add that on there, you see what happens. We cratered heavy, uh, uh, that long, uh, light blue bar that's hanging down there, that's the month of April twenty twenty. Twenty-three million folks out of work in one month. Um, it's like nothing we've ever seen before. So you see to the right of that, kind of the, uh, things getting better along the way. That next blue block above, that's the month of May, twenty twenty. Then you see the month of June, you start to add those blocks up together and they compose about two-thirds of the distance that we went down. That's what happened nationally. Let's take a look at what happened here in our neck of the woods, our neighborhood. This game's a lot more fun to play in person than by Zoom, but I often ask this question. How many jobs do you think are housed here in Lakewood, domiciled here in Lakewood? Rather than wait for folks to get off mute and make a guess on that, I'll just tell you that out in the wild, when we do this exercise, I usually get around eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand jobs in the city of Lakewood. That's what most folks tend to think of as the total number of jobs in our area. One time we got some folks that, uh, actually said forty thousand jobs. I thought, wow, they're, they, they know this a, a little bit better. The reality is, is that we have about seventy-four thousand jobs in the city of Lakewood, um, at the end of twenty twenty. Now, the reason I have that little approximately mark on there, I'll explain in just a little bit, but we'll, we'll go into the kind of the job situation. I'm gonna put up fifteen years where the job growth, this is our growth, this is for the city of Lakewood specifically. This isn't the county, this is, this is Lakewood in specific. So you can see over on the left-hand side is our scale, that top line is ninety thousand jobs. Next line down is eighty thousand jobs, then seventy thousand after that. And you can see that the one, the column that's furthest to the left, that's two thousand and five. The column that's furthest to the right, that's twenty twenty. So you can see kind of the way our job pattern, our growth is, is going in there. In twenty fourteen, we broke the seventy thousand job mark for the first time. You can see we're generally kind of inching our way up there, uh, along the, uh, along that, uh, above that seventy thousand line, headed towards that eighty thousand line, whoo, and then you see that twenty twenty drop-off that's on there. This is not every year in the month of June. And the reason that we picked June is it's right then the middle of the year. It's also before summer hiring really gets revved up and underway. It tends to be a really indicative month, uh, in the month of, uh, June. So, um, what we believe anecdotally and, and, uh, through some of the modeling that, that we did, is that our job growth came up to about seventy-four by the end of the year. When we do this next year and we put twenty twenty-one on this scale, we'll know for sure. So this is kind of how jobs are, are evolving over the next ten years. Now, don't get, don't get too alarmed here, but I'm gonna throw some spaghetti up on the screen here and, and you're gonna see these lines in here and I'll tell you what the lines mean kind of individually. But you see that spaghetti coming up there. Each of those lines represents a segment of our economy, our part of our economy, might be manufacturing, might be retail. Each of those lines show the job growth pattern over the last ten years. So over there at the left is twenty-ten, over there on the right is twenty-twenty. And you see that some of those lines are generally going upward, some of those lines are kind of ebbing their way down. Let's talk about those individually. That purple line that's up on the top there, that's our most prolific segment for producing jobs in the city of Lakewood. Any guesses as to what that might be? Nobody's gonna come off mute, so I'll just tell you right off the, uh, that, that's, uh, healthcare and social assistance. These are determined by what are called, uh, NICS codes or, or the North American Classification Industry System. So, um, we put those into place and, and that's the first one that's on there. You can see in twenty nineteen, we had about, uh, almost fourteen thousand jobs in healthcare here in the city, dropped off a little in twenty twenty. That pink line that you see over there that just kind of sneaks past the blue line in twenty twenty, that's public administration. That's, uh, government work. And, and you might expect us to have a large number of those because we have the federal center here in Lakewood. A lot of those jobs are domiciled here in the city of Lakewood. We also have the school district domiciled, so a lot of those school district jobs are, are public administration jobs and they're listed there. The good news is, is that's remained fairly flat over the course of ten years. So we really haven't had a lot of growth in terms of government employment over, over that period of time. Uh, we've had, uh, you know, some growth, but for the most part, we've remained relatively the same. Retail trade is that blue line and you can see it kind of peaked out about twenty sixteen and then started to drop off. Those are jobs in the, in the retail sector and that's somewhat reflective of how the retail sector has, uh, has, uh, has gone because, you know, a, a lot of those jobs are coming up because folks are now shopping on their computers at home and we need fewer jobs and we need different kinds of distribution systems. So retail trade is that one that's kind of ebbing towards the downward side. Scientific professional, uh, excuse me, professional, scientific and technical services, these are engineers, uh, uh, accountants, uh, architects, these kinds of folks, um, that are in there. And you can see that's the line that's the orange, basically, that takes a big dip between twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Um, we lost one of our, uh, technical operations during that year and that's the reason it came down. In general, it's on its way up and that's the, the area or the segment of the economy where we have the most firms, the most job, uh, not the most jobs, excuse me, but the most organizations that do that kind of work. So we've got more engineering firms in here than we do, uh, healthcare firms, but there are more jobs than healthcare firms. And then, uh, a real bright spot there is construction. You can see how it went up even during the pandemic. We, uh, you know, uh, construction was one of the essential, uh, jobs and we, uh, went to a lot of construction during twenty twenty. We can talk a little bit more about why that is. But, uh, we have, uh, two major general contractors here in the city of Lakewood. We have three electrical contractors that are some of the largest electrical contractors, uh, in the, uh, western states and certainly in the state of Colorado. So construction went up over that period of time. Here's a map with job density on it. It's kind of fun to take a look at this one here. Um, our Census Bureau likes to put these, uh, Lakewood into kind of these little, these little tilted maps. So that's the way the Census Bureau does these maps. But, um, you can see the heat indicates where job density is at its greatest. The darkest purple color you see there is about ten thousand to fifteen thousand jobs per square mile in that area. So you see a lot of jobs that are, that are happening there. If you look at the, uh, streets that are running east and west, Colfax, Sixth, Alameda, Jewel and Handen, and then you take a look at those north and south streets, Kipling, Wadsworth and Sheridan. If you follow the Wadsworth line down to where it meets the Alameda line, you see a great big purple blob. That, of course, is, uh, Belmont, city center. That's why you would expect to see a lot of jobs in that area. You can see over there on the western side, the Denver West Office Park, very dark purple, lots of jobs in those office buildings. That's where a lot of those seventy-four thousand jobs are located. Down south at Handen and Wadsworth, that's the Academy Park area, a lot of office buildings over there with a great density of jobs. So that's where the jobs are. Just for a moment, imagine yourself as a restaurant that wants to serve lunch. Where would you want to be? You'd want to be in the darkest purple areas because that's where people are working all day long and that's where they would go to get lunch. And that's why you see a lot of lunch places in those areas because that's a great place to set up shop in association with those jobs. This is kind of an interesting, uh, diagram that the Census Bureau puts forward to us. That green arrow up top indicates fifty-eight thousand twenty-eight. That's the number of people that are coming here to work from other places every day. So you've got, you've got, uh, roughly sixty thousand folks coming from Arvada, from Golden, from Denver, from, uh, Brighton, from Thornton, from any number of places to work here in the city of, uh, Lakewood and, uh, accomplish their jobs here in the city of Lakewood. That fifty-two thousand number, that's Lakewoodians going someplace else to work. So they're going to Arvada or to Golden or to Denver to work at jobs out there. And then that ten thousand number that's in the purple hexagon over there, that represents folks that both work here and, uh, live here in the city of Lakewood. One of the interesting phenomenons that occurs here is as some of those people are coming into Lakewood and some of those people are leaving, they're passing each other on the road. And that's a place where folks experience kind of growth and, and that sort of a thing because the, the traffic systems are up, that there's traffic on the highways. So you see those folks going back and forth. One of the ways to help reduce down that traffic is to make sure that housing and jobs are matched up in the city of Lakewood, so people have shorter commutes. Development highlights, this is 2020. Right along the way, we we monitor several development uh or what we call development highlights. It's a map on our website. You can check in with it at any time. We update it on a monthly basis. But thirty-nine projects completed in 2020 and then sixty under construction. These are all uh projects that involve some level of capital investment, significant capital investment, changing it out. Um it's might say, hey, Robert, can you put this into a little context for me? I would be happy to. Let me put up this table that shows you there. There's four years on those columns uh in that table. The furthest to the right, the one in dark blue, that's 2017, 2018 is in green, that hyper uh apricot color there, 2019, and then 2020 is in the light blue. You see in the light blue that thirty-nine and sixty that I just mentioned in that previous slide. Uh few less projects completed than in 2019. There were, there were forty-three in 2019, we got thirty-nine down there. But a lot more under construction. That was a phenomenon that worked because of the pandemic. A lot of folks said, hey, we can't do things operationally, so what can we do to invest in the future? So folks did uh uh re redevelopment sorts of projects or or refinish sorts of project. Um great restaurant over there uh uh over where uh Alameda Jewel come together, Front Range Pizza. They said, hey, we can't bring people in, so we're going to redo our dining room. So they spent a lot of time working on reconstructing that, bringing that out so that when um restrictions were lifted, they had a great big new shiny dining room and lots of folks to come out and be a part of that. We also break up our work into what uh four areas on there. There's four people that work in the in the city of Lakewood's formal economic development office. I say formal because virtually everyone's involved with somehow trying to improve our economy or bolster our economy. And so there's an opportunity to, this is the area that Vanessa Zarate in our office uh works on. We call it the Colfax Corridor area. It includes the Colfax Corridor uh proper right along this uh Colfax, but it also includes the mills, uh includes Denver West, um it goes all the way up to Twenty-Sixth Avenue to the north. Sixth Avenue is that southern boundary that's on there. A project that would make the development highlights list is this project. It's the Advanced Healthcare at fifteen sixty-five Pearson. It's about a block north of Colfax um near Oak Street, near the Oak Street Station. Um and it's a skilled nursing uh facility, and that'll be coming online a little bit later this year. The next area that we've got is the Union Corridor area. That's where Laura Moody from our office, that's where she focuses on a lot of that. It includes the Fed Center, it includes that Union Corridor stretch between Sixth and Alameda Parkway, and then all of Alameda Parkway headed over to to Green Mountain. The project that we'll mention over there is the Dutch Brothers Coffee that came online here not too long ago during the pandemic. And if you consider what was there, uh this is a pretty nice looking building uh there. It's a, you know, got that nice uh uh stone coating that makes it look uh real sharp and contemporary. The Alameda Corridor area, again, it includes the Alameda Corridor proper, um but it also includes the Belmar area, city center, goes all the way south to Mississippi, goes up north to that Sixth Avenue, again, Sixth Avenue is a key street in our city that divides these areas out. Um it goes all the way over to the east to Sheridan, and then heads over to the west, just below the Fed Center. Katie Faltis in our office, Katie Faltis in our office is the is the person that heads up um the uh general response of this particular area. And here's a uh project that you might be familiar with here. Hang on just a second, let me see if I can get this going. That's the Anna Hatberger uh that just opened up a a week ago today. Um and you kind of saw that time lapse in there of the way in which we work it. I got to give a real tip of the hat right now to our uh tr- our transportation engineer, Mr. Mike Whittaker um and our uh traffic sergeants in the police department, uh uh Mr. Love Joy and Mr. Mueller. They are the uh the architects of the plan that really came together. And as far as I know, everything has run incredibly smoothly over there uh and worked very well. We haven't had the uh the kinds of chaos that they had at some of the other openings of In-N-Outs around the state along the way. So uh that's uh that project uh in that Alameda Corridor area. The last area that we're going to talk about real quick is that South Lakewood area. Starts up north on Mississippi, goes all the way down to Crest Line into the Grants Ranch area. That's a part of Lakewood that a lot of folks don't really recognize as Lakewood. Is it Denver reps around it and Littleton gets involved over there, that sort of a thing. But uh this entire area is kind of the South Lakewood area. I'll show you a project that's down south in between the Chase Bank and the Hacienda Colorado, coming online. It's a Raising Cane's restaurant. They they serve chicken fingers with uh uh kinds of fun sauces and a very popular uh quick service restaurant. A lot of people refer to it as fast food. We call them QSRs, Quick Service Restaurants. Uh and then one towards the north is an office building uh that's being redeveloped right now, recommitted, remodeled. Um it's on Mississippi, just a little bit to the east of uh Wadsworth. Uh and so all of those offices hopefully will be occupied soon with lots of folks doing incredible things. That's on the north end of that south area. And yours truly, me, I'm the guy that uh represents down in that area, tries to help folks out with those projects that are in the South Lakewood area. Um folks may say, well, I I didn't know all that was going on there, and I say, hey, we're trying to communicate with you on a regular basis. Um well, we did eight hundred and eight tweets in 2020, um fifty-one emails letters. We took Christmas week off, um but otherwise every week we came out with one free to your inbox. Happy to get folks subscribed to that. Uh again, free comes in there, talks a lot about what's going on in the business world. Um Facebook, Instagram, you can see them on there, strategic partner meetings. Um those are meetings where we do some level of presentation or it's some kind of a planning sort of a function. So a board meeting, that that sort of a thing. We did two hundred and twelve. You add all those together, you divide by the number of days, means that four point six times a day on average, we're trying to tell you something about the business environment here in the uh city of Lakewood. So um I invite everybody to get involved with those and know a little bit more about what's happening here. So um the stuff that I'm talking about right now, I'll I'll will come to, you know, come to top of mind. Going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we did in 2020. One was we uh established pretty quickly, couple of pages to help folks out during the pandemic. First one was resources for business, resources for businesses to use. It's uh kind of amusing, we were smiling about it here. Vanessa Zarate in our office works with the International Economic Development Council, which is kind of the uh governing body or the national body for economic developers. A lot of communities throughout the uh the nation submitted, this is why we think we deserve an award, kinds of things. And they were talking about having to get a webpage up in sixty days or ninety days or that sort of a thing. We had ours up on day one. Um we we converted right away to make sure we had those resources. We refined it, had it real really well done by day two. That Support Local Businesses has a map where businesses can go up and talk about their hours. And so as restrictions eased and ebbed and flowed, folks were able to to update the map and let folks know whether they were open or closed, or whether they were needing to wear masks, or whether they were only doing carryout, that sort of a thing. We did temporary outdoor expansions. A couple of folks mentioned that in the video up top there. Um we got this thing running in in May of 2020, and it's the easiest program in the metro area. A lot of the restaurants and whatnot that had to do this in a lot of the different cities said ours was amazing. We had a one-page uh form there. Everybody pitched in and contributed to it. Even our friends over in West Metro Fire were able to check off there because, you know, the last thing you want to do is have a tent and maybe a generator or or some kind of a heating element. You want to make sure that that's done right, and so we made sure it's done right. We made sure it's done quickly. We expanded that out. Um this will probably be going on at least through the winter this year, up by at least until the first of the year. Some other communities have uh committed to doing this for uh multiple years. Don't know where we're going to land, but we're we're doing it well right now. We also set up the Economic Recovery Task Force. We got representatives from our eleven top industries by employment. You see them listed on there to come in and talk about ways in which we can respond to the pandemic. I remember the construction people, because they were essential, because they had to go, they were some of the first that figured out that you got to take temperatures and you got to keep logs and you got to do that. So they helped out a lot of the other uh uh industries that were kind of sending, uh you know, I'm not certain how we go with this. It was really great, and a lot of our 2021 uh strategic plan was developed through this process of folks saying what's on the horizon, near term and far term through that process. We also got our own grants program. We uh used CARE dollars, three point three million dollars of CARE's uh money. You see Katie Faltis in our office, holding up two batches of checks from one of the rounds that that are on there. Um three hundred and seventy-seven businesses were awarded grants, all the way from three thousand up to thirty thousand dollars per business to uh help out during that pandemic. Here's some of the other programs that I know some of the council members were interested in how Lakewood fared on some of these. This is the PPP program that you heard so much about. This is uh the uh Small Business Administration putting this together. I just want to take my hats off to our small business, and we work with the local small business uh administration office. Twelve million grants over the last twelve months. Twelve million grants were processed through that. We couldn't have done it without our SBA lenders, so lots of our banks and and financial institutions helping our businesses. We bring businesses, we make that connection and get these uh applications in there. What you're looking at right here is the folks that did higher than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the the loans. And they're mentioned as loans. They become forgivable grants if you do everything you're supposed to do uh on there. About two-thirds of them right now have been forgiven at this point. So a lot of them are still loans, but that's only about a third of them. Uh city, uh the state of Colorado got about ten uh point oh three billion dollars of the hundred and fifty K or greater pot. The city of Lakewood got about a quarter of a billion dollars through that pot, businesses out here. There were two rounds, so some businesses may have gotten two loans, uh and that's why we've listed them as loans and not businesses. But for the most part, they're individual businesses that receive those loans. This is the back half of that same PPP. These are the folks that are doing littler amounts or littler loans. These are the less than a hundred and fifty K, four thousand one hundred ninety-three in the city of Lakewood, hundred and twenty-five uh million dollars. You add those two screens that we just went through together, about fifteen billion dollars in Colorado and uh close to four hundred million dollars in the city of Lakewood through the PPP program. I'll also mention right now that through the uh, we kept a database of all of the different programs that we were trying to connect businesses to all during the pandemic. Um there were a hundred and thirty-five or so on there, most of the time went up as high as about a hundred and forty-four different kinds of programs to attach businesses to. So there were uh uh programs to help out businesses in the arts, and there were programs to help out manufacturers. And we had to keep track of all of those things, and our friends in the state helped us do that and get those out to our Lakewood businesses. Here's the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, and I believe Councilmember Johnson had a real specific question about this particular one. This just closed. This was part of the American Rescue Plan uh that that came in uh after the election. So uh twenty-eight point six billion dollars overall for this uh this program. About uh nearly half a uh billion dollars came out here to Colorado. Thirteen point five million came to forty-seven of Lakewood's restaurants. We we encourage folks to get involved with this RRF uh program, um and so that's the upshot of how that came about. And then this last program we're talking about, the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, or the EIDL, are idle uh loans on there. Uh these are actual loans. They're low-interest loans, but they come when there's an emergency situation. So we used a lot of these, as you'll recall, back in 2017, when Colorado Mills was so uh horribly hit by that hailstorm. And a lot of folks were out of business for a long period of time. Uh when the state declared that emergency situation, we were able to put some of these to work on the SBA. We worked really hard to get the this the emergency state declared here in Colorado, so we could work with businesses on these here. Um but roughly about forty million dollars in in these emergency injury uh loans, these emergency situations are there. Uh five hundred and forty-eight Lakewood business loans here, uh and those aren't calculated exactly by businesses because some businesses might have a couple. So if you were in Colorado Mills, you got hit with the hailstorm, and then you got hit with the pandemic. It's kind of a one-two punch over there, and so making sure those folks here are staying afloat. I want to mention our, uh we talked about attraction at the beginning. These are our targeted industries and uses. These are the ones that we proactively go after. Healthcare, scientific, uh professional scientific and technical services, the retail trade. Retail includes not only uh sales folks or folks selling products, but it also includes restaurants, um uh those kinds of uh entities uh in retail trade, arts, entertainment, recreation, management of companies and enterprises. You may be surprised to know that there's a lot of headquarters out here. Um the Natural Grocers has their headquarters here, uh Einstein Bagels has their headquarters here, uh Boston Market has their headquarters here in in Lakewood. Of course, Truma has a headquarters here, and First Bank has a headquarters here. So we go after those kinds of companies to uh to do that. And then, of course, federal and state government, public administration, sorts of jobs, those are the ones that we proactively go after. I just want to mention real quick here, some of the things that aren't on this list, things that we don't proactively go on. Self-storage is not on this list. We never have gone after a self-storage facility. There's nothing wrong with self-storage, that it's a fine business, but we don't go after it. Um that's not something that we proactively do. Once they're in the system, do we help them? Do we facilitate what they're working on? Of course we do, because we're we're good folks that uh help folks out when they're trying to get projects done. But we don't go after those kinds of folks. Car washes are not on this list. We don't go after car washes. Tattoo parlors, we, you know, tattoo parlors are a fine business, nothing wrong with them, but we don't proactively go after those kinds of businesses. Want to pause for a question right here, something to think about along the way, because I get this question from neighbors quite a bit, and that is, um why won't XYZ come to Lakewood? Um that's the question that they ask, and XYZ you can fill in with whatever you want. Maybe that's Microsoft to you, or maybe that's Google, or maybe it's Trader Joe's, or maybe it's Macy's, or, you know, any number of things. Uh why won't they do that? The first thing I want to do is is turn the question around. Let's make it a positive right off off the bat. And why would XYZ want to come to Lakewood? And there's lots of great reasons there, but those reasons are different for residents than they are for businesses. And I talked about this a little bit at the top, marketing for business in Lakewood is a little bit different. Businesses want to know that they can be successful in having a business here, be and and succeed here. And so those are the kinds of things we're talking about. The fact that you can have employees that are on here, that we have a market with lots of people that have money in their pockets that can afford to buy whatever it is that you're selling, those kinds of things, those are the the uh emphasis that we put on there. So we do a lot of demographic work. So eighty percent of traditional brick and mortar retail operations, eighty percent of their customer base comes from one mile within the radius of their of their stores. So you've got within two miles of their store, one mile going this way, one mile going that way. That's who's shopping in their stores. So they want to know who's in that in that market, what kind of households are in there. If you're a grocery store, you want nine thousand dollar a year customers, and those nine thousand dollar a year customers are folks that spend two hundred dollars a week on groceries. Who does that? Folks that have two adults in the house and two kids in the house. So knowing those kinds of things tells these grocery stores where the best place to land might be. We do a thing called site selection. Uh this is a uh a tending into vacant space. We keep our eyes on a lot of the vacant spaces around the area, not just the rate, but the very specific sorts of things. This is a great example. Spade Today was down near Wadsworth and Jewel. They were looking for another location. Uh found the old Knights of Columbus building up here. They were able to adaptively reuse that and go into that building uh right there. And that's a use of that building uh vacancy. This is a ground-up site selection. Folks may be familiar with this one. It's just north of the Sixth Avenue Frontage Road, just a little bit west of Sheridan. That's a Coated Metals Group. Their their headquarters is in Minnesota. They've got a presence over in Denver. We were able to get them to the point where they were able to build a thirty thousand square foot manufacturing facility to do uh, you know, metal uh work and that sort of thing over there. About thirty people employed in that facility. I would be remiss if I didn't mention a lot of our strategic partners. We've got a book that looks just like that book you see up on the screen. Um it lists our strategic partners, and here are a few of them that are on there. The Alameda Connects Organization, Alameda Corridor Bid, Colfax Organizations, the WCCA, Forty West, um Jeffco Business Workforce Center helps us out with a lot of those uh those law employment issues. Um Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation, a lot of the primary uh employers that are coming into the area. And you see the list kind of goes on there. We work with all of those folks to try to leverage um uh their expertise and our expertise, our resources, their resources, to make uh Lakewood that much better. And I'll end right here with the uh Lakewood Economic Development Team. That's the four formal folks that are on there. That's your all-American team right there, the red, white and blue. Um we didn't plan that, but I, by the way, just worked out. We said we're going to wear vivid colors and wound up in uh red, white, blue from left to right. That's Katie Faltis, uh Laura Moody, Vanessa Zarate, and then, of course, me. I'm the shortest person in that picture uh right there, but uh that's your economic development team. With that, I'll close down. I've uh taken forty-two minutes of your life, including the seven minutes with the video upfront. So hopefully it uh has been a worthwhile effort during this period of time. What questions might I answer for you at this time?
Thank you, uh sir, for that uh presentation. Thank you to your team as well. And uh certainly as a reminder, any information that uh council wants to see or folks that are tuned in, we can try to get you uh copies of these things. And also, your business uh, your business corridors have meetings every month where Robert and his team attend, and you can learn a lot of these different things at those meetings. So before I go to council questions, I'm going to start with uh public input. So this is um what we do at study sessions. It's your opportunity in the public to ask any questions that you have related to uh the presentation. It's different than public comment, but we'd love to open that up right now. And this is again for item three, the Economic Development Comprehensive Overview and Update. So if you wish to speak on this, please press star nine and then star six to unmute. Okay, I will close that portion now, and I'll start with Ms. Franks.
You caught me off guard. I'm sitting here going, what? I'm sorry. Um so uh Robert, I just wanted to kind of share with you um some of the feedback I've had from constituents over the last few years and get your feedback on that. I get questions along the lines of, you know, what I get questions along the lines of, you know, what is our economic development doing to attract things like a higher education campus, a tech campus? Or something more industry-related, um you know, that maybe is focused around um uh the outdoors like other municipalities have done. And you know, I've certainly talked to them about, certainly we're landlocked and, you know, uh obviously unless we uh take some other moves. And we also have transportation that we're dependent on, like an RTD to do, you know, additional routes to make things more accessible. Can you kind of generally talk to that as about, just to kind of educate those constituents on what you're already doing and what those challenges are that you guys bump up against? Because certainly um lots of municipalities would be trying to attract those same types of uh of 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 things, so thank you.
You you bet, and in general, from a from an attraction sort of a standpoint, um there's nothing that beats old-fashioned Lakewood. Uh you know, it's uh expanding your network, who do you know, and how do we get to folks that are uh able to connect with the opportunities that we have here in the city of Lakewood? You mentioned a couple of of things, a higher education campus, outdoor uh activities, those sorts of things. Uh outdoor activities are something that's a a hallmark or a target industry for the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation. So um we try to leverage what they're working on to make it successful here in the city of of Lakewood. Um you know, some of the things that happen over the course of time is to try to attract things into the Denver metro area, like the Outdoor Show. That we got out of Utah a couple of years back over here into Denver. Of course, last year it didn't quite uh be the show that it used to be, but um we're gonna get that back in there to start talking about Denver as a as a place to go. We work towards uh attracting the uh the BLM operation here and that building where they're gonna locate most of their city folks. I mean, obviously, on the western slope is where that, but anybody that's here in the city will be located in the city of Lakewood, into a a building. Don't tell we bridge, because they think that the BLM buildings have been breached, but it's actually in the city of Lakewood, so uh it's over there. The things that we do there are really just that old-fashioned Lakewood of 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 talking with brokers, talking with uh property owners, talking with folks uh that are uh in that uh particular industry. We go to a lot of trade shows, we uh market and advertise in the places where those folks are at. Um we uh uh did a uh we were involved with a thing that Golden was putting together, um and we partnered with them for that called the RIGHT, which is a uh is a award recognition show for Colorado outdoor industries that are economically uh based. And so I did a lot of support for that, bringing folks into Jefferson County, close to where we're at, and talking about those opportunities. Uh we have the headquarters for Christie Sports, which of course, as you know, does a lot of scheming, those sorts of things. Uh and I feel like I've kind of gotten off on this tangent here with the outdoor sports. But everything that we do attraction-wise really is that Lakewood, expanding the network and figuring out who who's doing a project and how do we get them into what we're uh what we're doing here in Lakewood. We've got to understand our opportunities very well and be able to market those to the folks that would want to locate those uh those industries here.
Thanks, Robert, I learned a lot of things that I I wasn't even aware of, so thank you for for sharing all that information.
You bet.
All right, we'll go to Mr. Bida and then Ms. Johnson.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Robert, uh thank you for your presentation, it was very, very enlightening. I have three questions for you, I think you'll, at least two of them will be easy, I'll go easy on you. Um first of all, the um there's a project going on there at uh Jewel and Wadsworth in the northwest quadrant there. It's between the uh Arby's and the Wendy's. And I I you have any idea what that is? Is that is that something?
I I do, the original uh the original plans for that are in involve uh two uh retail pad developments, so two buildings that are over there. They're around five thousand, six thousand square feet. One was designed to be a restaurant, uh the other one um could be kind of a convertible space over there. When they get all done, there'll be two new buildings in that parking lot. Um there, during the pandemic, uh some of the financing has been uh somewhat challenging. So um we've talked at some points about maybe having to scale it back to one, but that's what's under construction over there is that is that retail facility inside that.
Oh, great, that sounds like good news. And then uh second easy question is the uh the uh former bowling alley at uh Mississippi and Wadsworth. Is there any progress on that? That thing has been closed for a long, long time, kind of an eyesore. Any any chance of, you know, repurposing that or doing anything with that?
Yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the great challenges that we have in in our city is that particular project. And and that's one of those ones where um where we've got a lot of ideas and whatnot, and it's challenging to get the ownership of the of the property associated with the projects that we could bring in there and make the economics work over there. So I would say I'm always eternally optimistic that we're going to get something in there. We've brought lots of things uh to the table, and for various reasons, they haven't worked out. Um but we will never stop until we actually get that thing uh reworked in some fashion or another. But well aware of it and uh really working to try to get something into that, into that uh space, that property, that building. Um if we can reuse the building, that's great, um if we need to do something else, we want to be able to do that. But yeah, well aware of it and and iTunes share your frustration that it's been been empty for quite some time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Third question, this one's a little little harder than in the question is directly, do in your economic development efforts, do you have anything uh designed specifically uh towards the federal center and the federal government out there? And the reason I'm asking that is that, you know, I know the federal's the federal, you know, federal center is the federal government, they're they're a world unto their unto themselves, and we we understand that. But at the same time, you know, having having been out there for a number of years, you know, the General Services Administration is the procurement arm for the entire federal government, including the military. The only thing they can't buy for military or, you know, F-18 time cats and stuff like that, but weapons. But for the most part, they have the ability, the authority to to purchase just about everything for the government. And as you can imagine, they 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 spend billions and billions and billions of dollars. And a lot of that procurement comes right out of out of uh the federal center there, and they're always looking, and I'm going somewhere with this, but they're always looking for small contractors. You know, because under federal law, they're required to contract so much of their procurement with small businesses, you know? And I'm talking about minority-owned, women-owned, um uh uh veteran, disabled veteran-owned businesses, um all hubzone businesses. So they're they're they they really have that constantly trying to meet those those goals. And I know it's difficult for them to find those contractors. And so I'm just wondering if if we as as a city have uh ever looked at trying to um cater to that need in some way by attracting uh small businesses from really other parts of the country to either locate relocate here or open a a satellite office so that they can um try and service these needs of 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 the federal government.
Well, the short answer to your question is yes, we do some work with that hub zones. We've got several hub zones here in the in the city of Lakewood, we try to work with the businesses that are in that hub zone so that they can compete for those contracts more successfully uh with the uh General Services Administration. The state has the minority uh business owners uh office, and we try to work with those folks in order to to get them certified under those programs so that they're better able to compete for those uh those federal contracts. And as you know, the the federal government has never been able to service the, I think it's a twenty, I want to say twenty-five percent requirement of small business delivery to the federal government. They've never quite been able to make that just because they can't get the uh the uh entities in in the uh in the pipeline there. So we work with businesses that are in our city to get there. It's kind of interesting that you mentioned businesses from out of the uh area locating here so they can be closer to those those kinds of contracts. No, we haven't done that, that's an interesting idea and one that we haven't done before. So um you give me a little food for thought here to think think about how we we might be able to do that. So two answers to that question, yes, we do do some stuff, and then the second answer is, we don't do enough that way, and we should get better at it. And I and I appreciate you bringing it to the top of the top of the table so we can think about how we can get better at it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Robert.
Okay, I have Ms. Johnson, Ms. Harrison, and Mr. Libby.
Thank you, nice presentation, Robert. I do have a few questions, the second round of revitalization money was was publicly in uh an article. Could you please tell me what the criteria for that was and who makes the selection for that money?
I'm sorry, you talked about the restaurant revitalization program?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, that's a that's a federal program, and they just uh they they finished their allocation of that, which was about twenty, uh if I remember, twenty-five billion dollars, roughly twenty-six billion dollars that they put out there. And so the qualifiers that were there um were determined at the federal level, that's who was making the selections. Our goal was to try to get restaurants to apply for that. And a lot of the way in which it was structured was that you took your twenty nineteen earnings and you compared them to your twenty twenty. And the difference between those two really determined the the amount of your eligibility that were on there. So there were a lot of restaurants and whatnot that uh, you know, had lost, you know, up, you know, upwards of a million or two million dollars in that period of time. And how do we get those dollars out there? The forty-seven restaurants that we have in in Lakewood that were part of that program, um none of them are super high dollars, uh at least at my recollection on there. Forty-seven is a lot to to keep in mind in there, but that's that's essentially how that went, that's a federal program. So what we did here in the city was to to try to help our restaurants and whatnot, get involved with that program out of the federal government.
Okay, so then, if I'm understanding you correctly, the federal government decided which businesses and they were the ones that established the criteria?
Yes.
Okay, I have another question. Uh you were just speaking about the federal center, it did a few weeks ago, there was an auction. And do we know any more about that, or are there any more updates, what's going to be out there, uh what we're looking at?
We we don't, we're staying close to those folks as they're uh as they're unveiling those bids and whatnot. It was an interesting auction arrangement, because they had a a closing date time, but they also had a ticker on it. But if somebody made a bid, they had to wait forty-eight hours to close the bidding once again. And so they had a couple of bidders that got in on the underwire, so the actual close of it was a little later than what they anticipated. The the word that we got was is that there were somewhere around fifty or sixty uh different kinds of proposals that were uh involved there. Um but they haven't revealed exactly um if or any of those will come to the top or what those proposals are. Um we're we're we're, you know, we're anxious, they're waiting to try to find out uh who winds up at the top of that process and and work with them. As you know, the federal center will, if it comes out of the federal uh land-holding sort of a situation, it will go into the city of Lakewood, and that we have some zoning and some interest in making certain that that develops in in a variety of ways that are conducive to our comprehensive plan and so on and so forth. So we're very anxious to find out who uh who might come out on the top of that bidding process, but at this juncture, we don't know.
So the bidding then is still up in the air, and we still don't really know what's going to um be what they're looking at to develop out there?
Yeah, we we we, up in the air is not quite the right thing, all of the bids are in, that bidding is closed, and they're taking a look at those proposals there to determine who's up on top. And so we don't know which of those is on top. And then, of course, they may choose to, based on those those proposals, not choose any of them and continue to go down that road. So um the 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 short answer to your your question there is no, we don't know what's proposed and what what might be uh down the uh on the horizon for that property.
Okay, because I understood that there were only two bidders at the end, so they're still kind of balancing, it sounds like. And my last question, um I am asked continuously about Colfax and the revitalization. And uh frankly, when we drive down Colfax, um it really looks like it needs some love down that area. And of course, there was a lot of interest in Westland, but when you drive from from Westland going east, there's a lot of vacancies, properties are not being kept up. What can we do? How can how can Councilman Abel and myself help you?
Oh, that's a that's a very interesting question. Essentially, it's the same thing that all of the community can do, is to be engaged and involved with what's what's going on there. And of course, that's one of the more active parts of the city, we we hear from those residents and from the organizations that are that are working out there on a regular basis. Um it's near and dear to our hearts as well. Colfax is one of the defining elements of the city of Lakewood, in my opinion. And uh, you know, uh being successful out there is something that we continuously strive to do. And so um we do get a couple of steps forward, and then uh it feels like uh there's just so much to to go up that hill to get successful with it. Uh we just keep trying, we keep working on it every day. Things that can help be uh there is to be a a real strong cheerleader and advocate for them, and both you and Councilman uh Abel are are very good at that. Um you you're you you represent, you're there, you're concerned, you're you're talking about it, and when we have opportunities, you're there to help back that with whatever needs to 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 happen. The council backing those kinds of proposals that come forward that we really want to have happen there, those are the ones that we that we want to pursue. So uh we're gonna keep trying to put those those ideas and those those projects in the hopper, we're gonna keep working on those vacant properties, and we're gonna keep working on the the networking and work with the brokers on there. There's a lot of exciting stuff that's uh that's happening behind the scenes and working there. Uh but we have that saying that in economic development, it's it's never a done deal till you can walk through the door. So even though we're we feel like we're getting closer to some projects up there, um it's not, it won't make any difference until the the proof is in the pudding, until you can walk through that door. So uh we'll keep going on it, it's a it's an exciting time to try to work on those kinds of kinds of projects, it's.
Do we have any updates with the developer that owns Westland? What he's looking at, will he be coming here to speak with the neighbors in person? There was some talk of that.
Yeah, we talked about uh that being some kind of a meeting where the neighbors would get together and talk with folks, and we've been working with that and letting them know that. At this point, what they're really proposing or talking about doing is filling in the existing space that they have, getting uh some some uplift in there, getting some uh good tenants uh to work in that space. And that's what they're really working on or saying that they're working on right at at this time. So um we, you know, we we're standing there ready to help out with that, however we can help out with that, if that's the plan. Um as far as getting together on a meeting thing, we remind them that that would be something to do. I think there there there's a desire to really uh understand what the the pro the production of that meeting might be. So a way to help that out might be to have a real clearly focused agenda that 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 could attract them into wanting to do it. In other words, what are the neighbors bringing to that that conversation? How can we, you know, have them help? Because they've they've given us terrific ideas, I mean, we've got we've got plans with terrific ideas, uh and how do we uh fill those in? And then essentially, how do we, how do we make the the traction happen over there, and the neighbors can be involved with that traction happening? Obviously, all of those things need to come together in some fashion or another. And right now, there seems to be a moment of, well, I I don't know how we're gonna get that traction. So we're gonna keep trying on there, I know I know the uh the mayor and others have uh uh talked with these folks and and whatnot. Uh we keep them very close, we talk to them on a regular basis, and 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 we remind them of how important this project is to the city of Lakewood. It's a very important project for us, um for them, and everybody wants to succeed. How do we how do we get everybody energized towards that success?
Well, the neighbors have been very energized for quite a while, Robert, and they are very hopeful that they can have a sit-down meeting in person with the developer and work together. You know, there's not an antagonism antagonist type of feeling there, but they do what they are anxious to see something happen. So you are saying that basically at this point, he is not going to be to doing any tearing down of the existing shopping center and rebuilding? He is going to try and fill those those vacant businesses, is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Yeah, that's what they're representing right at the moment, that's what they're saying their plans are, they're really taking it out to the market. Um the market's changed, obviously, with the pandemic, so that's a that's a injury, that's uh giving them some different kinds of of possibilities. Um and they want to take that out to the market to see if they can make that work. Um so that's that's where they're at or what they've they've talked about doing so far.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um a couple of different things. Robert, when um when you were talking about the property at um on Jewel, west of Wadsworth, there were the the two restaurants, there is a sign up there that says The Rock Church. And there is a um an idea that there's going to be a church going in there, do you know anything more about that?
Uh I I I don't have a an official thing on there, but my interpretation of that is The Rock Church wants you to attend The Rock Church. Um so in other words, they're.
Okay.
They're using.
Well, just, okay, just FYI, because that's the rumor mill that's going through, so I just, you know, not need to know that. And then um west of Kipling, again, on Jewel, up the hill, there was um an old restaurant that was going to be converted to senior housing at one point. And then that that development's just got a big fence around it, and I think it's had several homeless um whatnot. Do you know anything about that particular property? It would be about, I'm gonna guess about the na the twelve hundred West Jewel, something like that, um is is what the address would be?
Yeah, I'm I'm familiar with the project, I haven't had an update in quite some time, so I need to follow up on that, I will follow up uh and tell you what I figure out, or tell folks what what.
Well, and probably also. Well, and probably also, um, again, there, there are some homeless in that area that it may be interesting to, to contact as well. So just FYI, thank you very much. Excellent presentation, as usual.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Laber?
Thank you, uh, hi, Robert, good to see you. Hopefully, uh, we can have you maybe come down to our next council meeting. Be good to have you again and we'll try to have a better meeting than we had last.
Oh, yes, a fair meeting, yes, I, that would be, I would enjoy that, yes, thank you.
Awesome. Uh, just a quick question, wanted to see if you have any updates about our, uh, expanding the LRA and, uh, just expanding potentially our investment areas?
Uh, I, I do, we're, we're coming up next week with an LRA presentation now for folks that, uh, we're having a special LRA meeting. You'll get to meet the, uh, LRA Council, um, the special counsel that we hired, uh, earlier this year. Um, actually, I guess it was tail end of last year, no, it was this year. Uh, at any rate, um, meet those folks and talk about the expansion of the board and then how we do that. Um, as most of you know, and I'll just talk for the, the home audience, uh, there. If we wanted to do new urban renewal areas and identify those along the way, we would have to expand our board as per state statute. And so in order to do that expansion, the current board, you folks, would have to have a moment of saying, you know, that's not a direction we want to go, so we want to expand that board. And so next week, uh, when we're up on there, I think it's next week on the schedule, uh, next week or two. Uh, that's what we're, that's what we're going to be talking about. So we'll have all of the, all of the nitty gritty details at that point for you.
Okay, well then I'll just wait for the rest of that then.
You bet.
Thanks.
Ms. Springsteen?
Thank you for the presentation tonight, I appreciate it, a lot of work went into that. Um, uh, I was just wondering what, what we are doing to attract minority-owned businesses to Lakewood. Um, you know, there's a lot of discussion about our priority of diversity and inclusivity here. And we have a lot of Spanish-speaking people and I'm just wondering, ¿ofrecen servicio si ayuda en español? Um, uh, what kind of support are we giving Hispanic businesses? Um, I actually had a constituent come up to me who lives in sort of the Alameda Sheridan area this weekend. And he said that there's a lot of empty businesses along there, a lot of, uh, uh, just parking lots where people are parking their, uh, motor homes and just kind of setting up camp there. And he's called the police about it multiple times and, and claims that sort of nothing has happened. And so I'm just, you know, one of my concerns when I heard that story is if that happened in Belmar, we'd be all over that, you know? And so I always have to stand up for my East Lakewood Ward three, uh, people. And, um, and we do have all of these, uh, uh, issues in terms of needing to attract minority businesses. So I just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit and what's being done in that regard? Thanks.
You bet. Well, one of the things that we've done is one of the tactics that we have in the, uh, 2021 plan is really to, to do, uh, to have success in working with, uh, women-owned businesses and minority-owned businesses. The, the state has a minority-owned business office that we've just not, not spent a lot of time working with over the, over the course of the last few years. Now we're, we're putting that to the forefront to try to make that, make that happen. In terms of specific things that are, that are on there, I don't have a, a specific sort of, of thing other than we're aware of the fact that we need to get stronger at that. Um, the grant program that we set up, we made sure that, that all of the materials were in Spanish. One of, uh, one of the people on our team is a, uh, Spanish speaker. And so, uh, Vanessa Alt is out with, uh, that in terms of, of making those, uh, businesses, uh, uh, aware of the program and working with that. We also extended out to, uh, some, uh, one of the businesses that was received a grant was a native Korean speaker. And another one was a native Thai speaker, they have Thai restaurants, that, that sort of thing. And so we recognize that there's a gap there and that we're going to have to get better at, at, at filling that gap. We've got it as a focus of the area and then, uh, we're going to continue to work on that. And then hopefully, uh, by the time we get to the end of the year, we're going to tell you how we've been successful in working on that particular, uh, that issue. But we're aware of it and it's in our plan, working with, uh, uh, women-owned businesses and, uh, uh, persons of color businesses as well.
Mr. Abel, then Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, referring to your, uh, comments on, uh, Colfax, some funding for betterments over there might, might help the situation quite a bit. Uh, if we can make it look better, I think we will interest more people in, uh, locating there. Uh, and you mentioned, and I was quite surprised that we have 200 new businesses in Lakewood. Uh, I believe I read that in the memo, uh, over the past year. That's, uh, that's impressive. What, is that a net figure or is that just new businesses without?
It's not a net figure, it's a, it's a new businesses figure in terms of those that have started a business in, in the, uh, city of Lakewood. Um, part of that was a response to the pandemic. So in other words, the pandemic created opportunity for folks to get into business to help out with, with pandemic-related things. So for example, everyone in the, in the world had to put up these Plexiglas sorts of things. So businesses that put up Plexiglas sort of a thing really didn't exist all that much. I mean, they were handy people and whatnot, but they pivoted and went on to those, those kinds of businesses. So a lot of those 200 are on there. It was also the, the, the fact that, um, folks were not doing what they were doing before. And they thought, ah, this is a great time to start a business. I don't know that I would have thought that way, but there were a lot of folks who actually did. So we talked with a number of folks that, that wanted to get started and we got them into a licensing program and, and got going there. And, you know, we're going to have to, uh, check in and see how things are going, um, as they figure out what to, what to do next. And in the video at the beginning, you saw a couple of businesses that were already in the pipeline, ready to go, COVID hit. So they didn't have much choice other than to start the business and make the best of it and, and do that. And unfortunately, they've been able to figure out ways to pivot and be, be successful. And that's one of the, one of the great things about the American spirit of entrepreneurialism is, you know, if, uh, if life has given you lemons, you figure out how to make lemonade, so.
There you go, we seem to have some, um, entrepreneurs who have a lot of faith in Lakewood. So we appreciate that.
That, that's why it's fun to do, do my job. I mean, when you're working with folks with that kind of aspiration and that kind of optimism. I mean, how can you not love to come to work every day? I mean, really?
Great, thank you.
Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, I forgot to ask Robert about the Old West Drive-In area. What, what's the scoop on that? And then I'm going to shut up, thank you.
That's okay, remind me where the West Drive-In is, I'm not, it's not ringing bells right now.
Sorry, it's, um, Kipling and Sixth Avenue, the northwest corner there, back behind, I think Hooters and let's see, what else was in there? So, um.
Was it Hooters that was torn down? Yes, and now I know where you're talking about, the, the former drive-in. A, a good portion of that is owned by the, the Colorado Land Conservancy. And one of the things they want to do is retain ownership of that property and figure out how to make it profitable and make money for, uh, the conservancy over there. So right at the moment, we've got a, a project in the, uh, planning stages for a solar farm on that, uh, on that property. So, um, there are some other things that might be, uh, better suited over there. We continue to work on bringing the projects in there. There's about five landowners that are in that general area and getting them all together on the same page so that we can do kind of an aggregated property is really the goal, uh, that I would have for there. And really to fix the transportation issue there. As you know, you've got Greenwich Road and you've got the, uh, Sixth Avenue that comes in there and it's kind of, kind of tough. What I like to do is get a project in that, that ostensibly fixes that so that the, the traffic flows a little bit better and can go to that, to that project. But in the hopper right at the moment is that solar farm.
All right, anything else, Council? Other questions? Robert, again, thank you. And, and I would mention, you know, the different layers also. Robert works with the state of Colorado. There's a question about primary employers in education. Jefferson County Economic Development Council really focuses on, on those sorts of things. And there's been a code amongst the region that we try not to poach from one another. And it, it's really worked well for regionalism. And so Robert may be chasing a project in, in Lakewood, but also supporting one in Arvada, knowing that just bringing jobs is going to help throughout. We also partner with the Hispanic Chamber and they've tried to bring some different programs to the forefront. And then one of our citizens, Sandy Weathers, has really taken upon herself to do a ton of outreach with our Hispanic businesses and, and really have brought them to the table through the nonprofit that she works with. So it's all, it's all of us together working to bring these. And I know Ms. Hodson gets a lot of phone calls, a lot of interest about projects in Lakewood, as do I as mayor. And so there is interest and people are excited. And hopefully we can keep the momentum going. So with that, thank you again, thanks for, uh, all that you do and your mighty team of four. You guys are all over the place and, uh, giving a great education and great support to the community.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you for giving Mr. Todd on your agenda, folks, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up is going to be item four. We have a wireless code update. Um, I'm going to turn that over to our deputy city manager, Ben Goldstein, who's going to carry us through this. Then we will do, um, public input. Looks like we have some folks that want to pool some time and, um, and a couple of comments that came in on Lakewood Speaks as well. So, Mr. Goldstein, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, City Council. Um, tonight, uh, we're, we're going to talk a little bit about what's happened over the last year. Uh, but then also give you all an opportunity to ask questions. I know there's been some interest among a few city council members, but also members of the community. And, uh, we're going to try and address some of those questions. I know some of them want to speak tonight. It's a little different than the traditional format for a city council meeting. Uh, so we're, we're just going to do our best to address, uh, any questions that have come up maybe in advance as well. Um, as a reminder for City Council, uh, you adopted ordinance 2020 dash one, uh, last year. And that put in place new rules, uh, governing wireless facilities in the city of Lakewood. The last time that had been adopted or updated was in the eighties. Uh, so it, an update was certainly needed, um, to bring us into compliance with federal law as, as well as state law. And that's really what prompted the staff to start looking at it last year. Um, again, as a reminder from City Council, and I think this is an important thing to keep, uh, in the back of your mind is, uh, the discussion happens tonight. Um, the city is very limited in the areas that it can govern as it relates to wireless facilities. There's federal and state preemption. Uh, for those of you who have listened to me talk about legislation, uh, we really care about our home rule authority. Um, and occasionally there are laws that are passed that are a matter of statewide concern and that supersedes our home rule authority. Even further, uh, there are federal laws that are passed that cer- certainly supersede our home rule authority. So those are the confines that staff worked in, um, when we brought the, the code changes to you all last year. Those are still the confines that staff works in. So we might personally feel passionate about it, uh, from a staff standpoint. We might have concerns about the health impacts, uh, but those are not areas of the law that were able to impact at a municipal level. Uh, that was further, uh, made clear by the Supreme Court, not taking action on a case, I think it was the city of Portland against the FCC. Uh, that, that ruling or, or lack of ruling, uh, just took place last month. So that, that's just one more example of, uh, the, the federal government saying, no, this is our area to, to control the law. Where we are limited, uh, I think we've done a great job. Um, over the last year, we didn't see a ton of action, uh, among interested parties. So companies looking to put cellular sites in Lakewood. We had 23, uh, site applications, approximately 23 site applications since January. Most of those occurred after the new law. I think there were two or three that happened before, uh, the law, uh, took, took place mid-year 2020. And then, uh, so about 20 of those after, I think Councilmember Abel had a question about that. Of those, um, I, I know there were some questions about how many of those are 5G. Um, Mike Whitaker, uh, who was referenced earlier and just popped on your screen, is going to give you, uh, at the, when I'm done with my summary, he's going to give you a little, again, some of you might recall this, but 5G 101. Um, we're going to do re- really abbreviate it. I know some of you don't want to get into that we've done this and that's okay. So we're going to do an abbreviated if you have questions or have to answer more detailed questions on it. But, um, because the city's not able to regulate, uh, based on health impacts or, or the strength or signal, um, being broadcast, that's one of the things that a, a company could go in and make a change to their radio antenna into a cited pole. So something that's already been approved. And they wouldn't actually have to go in and tell us that they made an update to the radio equipment. That's not an area of law that we have power to impact. Uh, we can say where the pole goes, we can say what the pole looks like, not what goes in the pole. Um, so that's important to keep in mind. Uh, we haven't had any issues, uh, with the law that you all passed last year. Um, we think it's gone pretty well. I don't know that the cell companies love it. Um, it, it certainly makes their lives a little more difficult for citing. Um, but they, they've been compliant. Uh, we haven't had any legal challenges. I know that was one of the concerns staff raised when we were pushing the envelope a little bit with some of the things that were adopted in the law. Um, we think we, we found that line, we didn't cross it. So we haven't had any legal challenges. Um, I, I know members of the community are still very interested in limiting the deployment of 5G, really they're talking about millimeter wave technology. Um, that's something we don't have the power to do. Um, we have the power to control where the poles go and what they look like. And we think you all have done a really good job with the law you passed last year. Um, lessons learned, uh, we really want to reduce pole clutter. That's one of the things that you all were interested in. From a, a city aesthetic standpoint, long-term aesthetics, that's one of the things from a staff standpoint, we're really interested in. We don't want poles spread throughout every single neighborhood, littering the city with standalone wireless poles. So we're, we're trying to encourage the use of existing structures, so that's a streetlight pole. Um, right now, those poles are largely owned by Excel Energy. Um, one interesting thing is Excel was getting a lot of requests, not necessarily in Lakewood, but throughout the Denver metro area for, uh, a pole replacement with a, a small cell site on it. Um, they ended up making it very difficult for the wireless companies, uh, as, and, and expensive. Um, Excel saw this as a revenue opportunity, we think. Um, so it became expensive, um, it also, uh, slowed the process down. So the wireless companies found a workaround in some areas. Lakewood has a lot of wood distribution poles with overhead wires on them. And there's an application to deploy small cell, um, hanging suspended, as you saw a picture in the report, I believe, the staff memo, suspended from the wire, um, so inline wire transmission. Uh, that was the company's workaround. So we didn't foresee that, um, when you all passed the rules, but the rules still apply. And in some cases, uh, it's, it's more aesthetically pleasing. You already have the overhead wire, it'd be great to underarm all the wires we could. We don't have the money to do that, so those wires exist already. It's not a new tower sitting in someone's front yard. Um, so that, that's something that's happening. Also in the lessons learned area, uh, Belmar has been, uh, an area of interest due to, uh, the, the concentration of people. In, in the map Robert Smith showed during his presentation, you saw that dark concentration of purple. So those are people who are working. There's also a lot of activity of people live in that area. And there's a lot of interest, particularly among younger residents, in having high communication, high technology. So whether that's fiber to the premise or cell phones that work in their house. Um, so the, the companies are aware of that and, and they're meeting the needs of the community. Belmar is a concentration of people, they need to be able to support the bandwidth that's being demanded. And the streetlights in Belmar don't lend themselves well to, to being replaced um, with a, a combination streetlight slash small cell pole. Um, so we, we foresee Belmar being a, a long-term challenge because it's, it's, it's kind of going to be a race to who can get their poles placed in Belmar first. Um, and then due to the rules that. And then due to the rules that the 600-foot spacing between poles that you all passed last year, that might prohibit another company from coming in and placing a pole that would meet their coverage needs. So we we might end up being challenged. One, one of the things that came out of the ruling at the Supreme Court about a year ago is that we think we can hold the 600 feet unless it impacts coverage. And and we talked about that last year. So that that might be an area where we're really interested in not having pole clutter for a lot of reasons. But the the concentration of the need might precipitate some some level of pole clutter. We're working with existing companies to try and co-locate in the same streetlight or same tower in that area to to further reduce that. And then the the federal preemption piece, we're we're continuing to work on that. The city is a member of CCUA. That's the Colorado Communications and Utility Alliance. It it's an organization that represents cities from Aspen to Arvada, from Lakewood to to Loveland. It's it's all across the Denver metro area and also all across Colorado. And CCUA has been lobbying on behalf of cities to maintain as much, quote unquote, home rule authority as they can for us. I will say I don't know that it has been to great avail. The current FCC and the past FCC under both a Democratic and Republican president have shown that they they tend to listen to industry more than they do local government. So I don't foresee dramatic changes in our rulemaking ability. If anything, recent rulemaking has shown a a further erosion of our ability to impact the the sighting and 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 type of antennas that are going up as opposed to the opposite direction where we're gaining power. We're going to continue to work on that front as well. But I think the the law you passed last year is certainly still a good law. There hasn't been significant changes that would precipitate us recommending an amendment or something like that. But it is something we're watching on an ongoing basis. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Whitaker to do a little 5G 101. So everyone's speaking the same language, per se, for the rest of the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Good evening, Mr. Whitaker. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen a little bit. So did the the Apple screen pull up? Not that I'm trying to sell Apple. But if you if you go down and you're looking at a a new cellphone, it gets kind of the carriers out of it. You don't have to worry about the Verizons and the AT&amp;T because most people have Apple phones. So I know one of the questions we obviously get talked about a lot is how many 5G towers are in Lakewood? And so if you look down the 5G bands here for your iPhone, you know, you got 2100 megahertz all the way down here to 4700 megahertz that the phone can talk to. And then you've got at the very bottom, the 28 gigahertz and the 39 gigahertz. If you look over at the older LTE bands, or I shouldn't say older, there's still bands over there. You'll notice the 2100 is the same as a 5G. And so 5G isn't a real, it's more of a marketing term. It's not really defined. So in Verizon talk, they call a lot of this 2100 megahertz their nationwide 5G, which is is the the radios that they've been using for over a decade in Lakewood. So when I hear a question on how many 5G towers are in Lakewood, I kind of translate it in my head to what they call the ultra wideband, which are these 39 gigahertz and the 28 gigahertz. So another way to look at that is this is obviously the latest iPhone 12. If we go to the previous model, the iPhone 11, there's none of that 5G in that phone. So if you've got an iPhone X or 11 in your pocket, you know, it's not physically capable of talking at that ultra wideband frequencies. And so they're still calling it LTE here. I mean, it's just packaging the data a little bit differently and and sending it to your phone. And and presto, you've got what they can now call, you know, 5G with the same radio frequencies that they've been using for over a decade. So that was the big thing I wanted to talk about on on the iPhone or on the the radio frequencies. And then to kind of give you a little bit of furthest from what Deputy Manager called the June 28 ruling from the Supreme Court when they denied our review of the Ninth Circuit ruling. It it's very stark in the the Ninth Circuit ruling of the the FCC's determination, where it prevents us to have any effect on prohibiting to preempt any state or local government requirement preventing a telecommunications or personal wireless service provider from offering any covered service the provider wishes to provide using any capability or performance goals it wishes to employ. So it doesn't give me a whole lot of wiggle room there when it comes to some of these 5Gs. And so that's why we're we're kind of giving you a heads up, the 600-foot spacing requirement for standalone poles. If we can't get those to to replace existing streetlights where that distance doesn't apply, what I'm being told by outside counsel is they get permitted because we can't deny it, even if it's at 500 feet. If they can show me that their coverage pattern doesn't work with a 600-foot spacing. So that's kind of the the strings we're we're kind of being held to. That hasn't been an issue yet, but I can see it foreseeing coming down the road. As Deputy Manager said, you know, Excel's really put some limitations. So when they do a a cell site, they require one provider on each pole. So a company like Crown Castle, whose whole business plan is to co-locate as many cellular providers on the same pole as they can, isn't isn't able to use an Excel pole. And so it's it's just leading to a lot of a lot of issues that we haven't had to work, we haven't had a problem yet because we're still early in the process. But that's what we kind of foresee coming. So with that, I will turn it back and I think we're primed to the question and answer portion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Goldstein, anything else right now?
No, I think I think we're happy to answer any questions City Council has and appreciate the opportunity to bring this back in front of you and kind of check in and share where we're at.
Great. All right. Thank you. So we'll go to the public input piece and want to thank our city clerk for working with our community members. We're going to start with the pooling request, which would be Mr. and Mrs. Sincere and Mr. Hauser and Mr. Kenny pooling their time for 10 minutes. So as soon as we can get them plugged in and up, we'll get your time started. And I'll let you know on this one, I'll let you know when you have two minutes left and then when you're down to 30 seconds. And then after you have gone through this, if you are part of the pooling, just help us out. If you want to stay online, that's great, but keep your hand down because your time will be yielded.
So I, this is Fran Sincere. I am getting feedback on my phone here, so I don't know what to.
Are you watching and listening on different devices?
Yeah, I've got my computer open and then I have my phone.
That can sometimes cause feedback.
Right. Okay, so I don't want to shoot my time.
I haven't started it yet.
I I asked Mr. Rome if he he could display the PowerPoint that I put up.
Looks like he's got the screen shared and he gets the PowerPoint up.
You don't see the PowerPoint, Mayor?
Not yet.
Hmm, okay, hold on.
You're not muted, sir. I guess I can do that. There you go, Mr. Rome. You are, you have the the PowerPoint up. Mr. Sincere, just let me know when you're ready to go and I'll start your time.
Just a second. Can I ask you to put your phone on mute?
Okay, so I'll do this as best as I can. I don't know how to get rid of the echo, but I hear an echo when I talk to myself anyway, so that's all good. My name is Francis Sincere. I've been a 41-year resident of Lakewood. Over the years, I've been more and more concerned about the rapid and virtually unchecked growth of wireless facilities in our community. And that's why I joined Lakewood Broadband Task Force with other Lakewood citizens. Bruce, a second slide, please. So what is Lakewood Broadband Task Force about and what is our interest? We're supportive of a broadband strategy, including wireless and fiber optic cable, which continues to safely and securely improve the quality of life and success and prosperity of its citizens, businesses, and government. In other words, we're not here to stop anything that will inhibit the prosperity of Lakewood is a good place to live for everybody. However, there are some things that we are concerned about, and I'll go into those as quickly as I can. For one, we are concerned about the mistakes made in the publication of the Wireless Cell Facility Ordinance that was passed last year. Second, we want to be make sure that citizens and businesses, especially around their homes and businesses, are receiving notification when wireless facilities are being installed. We're also concerned about the imminent installation of over-the-air reception devices, otherwise known as OTARs, which will be placed on residences throughout Lakewood. And I've included in my slides later on here, I'll get to that, a highlight of the GAO's report to policymakers such as the City Council, which I think will inform you all about some opportunities that you have as policymakers. In other words, our hands are not completely tied as a city. And fifth, we're concerned that there is no ongoing oversight and or citizen participation in commission-like, in a commission-like process, where we can advise the Council on broadband developments and issues. Let's turn to slide three. First, I'll address the published ordinance itself that we published last year under Mayor Paul's signature. It was disconcerting to our, to us when we did an analysis and identified discrepancies between the published ordinance and the transcripts of the July 27 Council meeting in which the revisions were passed. I just displayed here about three or four items, five items here that things were voted on and passed, but they didn't appear to be in the ordinance. Assistant City Manager Ben, who you've heard from tonight, Ben Goldstein, responded to our analysis on July 2. However, his responses were fairly general. So what we would like is a detailed item-by-item disposition of the analysis we submitted to Council on June 1, and we hope that this is forthcoming. Furthermore, we suggest that the mayor and the City Council review the process, which resulted in this incorrect code being being published and address the errors and enact of and enact some corrective actions to prevent these mistakes in the future. Our next issue is about the notification to home and business property owners when WCFs are planned for installation near their properties. During the finalization of the WCF code last summer, we requested a provision in the code that citizens living or working near WCFs to be installed would be given due notice. During the meeting, and appropriately so, I think, staff stated such notices were not needed in the WCF code because zoning codes require those notifications already. Okay, if this is working well and truly functional, I think we would like to be able to see in the one-year review any documentation of all the property and business owners who were notified about WCFs installed near them during this last year. I think that should be part of the annual review report. Who was involved, who was affected, in other words. In addition, we recommend that the corrected WCF ordinance provide a courtesy of a cross-reference to the zoning requirements of notice to citizens for WCF installations. So that, you know, when vendors are, you know, putting up their facilities, they can reference the fact that some notice requirement is is upon that, is is their responsibility. Bruce, if we can go to slide four. OTARs, I think you probably have all heard about this. We recall the sentiment of the Council during last summer's July 27 code ratification meeting that it was clearly to keep WCFs out of residential neighborhoods. LBTF believes that this is a wise decision for many reasons. However, this last March, the FCC created a new rule that allows anyone to rent space on their rooftops for reception antennas with no restrictions from local jurisdictions and no notice to others living near the OTAR. Now, the children's, now here's where I don't think the city of Lakewood's hands are tied, and that's this. The city, I mean, the Children's Health Defense filed a class action lawsuit in the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia very recently, I think it was in March, against this new FCC rule. Lakewood Broadband urges the city of Lakewood to join in this lawsuit and fight for our rights to local control. In the meantime, Lakewood should not change its WCF code banning the use of residential rooftop antennas or WCFs, such as the one pictured here in this slide. We, along with you, are very concerned with cyber security. We think it's prudent for the city to include language and requirements and permits to limit the city and residents from hacking, malware transmissions, ransomware attacks, being transmitted through the permitted WCFs. I'll now turn over to slide number five. I just want to give you all a summary of the GAO report that was issued last November, which gives policymakers some guidance about what they can actually do to help with the development, the sane development, if you will, of 5G wireless in their communities. Let's turn to the next slide. There are various policy options. One is the spectrum sharing technologies. Another one is coordinator coordinated cybersecurity monitoring. These are just examples. I think the next page also points out. If I can turn to that to Bruce. Cybersecurity requirements and then privacy practices. You know, we're concerned about how data is going to be transmitted in our communities. You know, 5G is a very vulnerable transmission facility. It it just really does not have the kind of privacy protection that citizens truly need, okay? That people are concerned about data surveillance. The U.S. government is not going to be using 5G very much in their in their secure communication systems. So these are areas I think that the Council can delve into in due time. I know that this is a very complex matter and it's not easy, but I just wanted to show that this was provided to local authorities as well as state governments, county governments, and so forth, to give them some idea of what direction they can go to make this a more sane implementation for their communities. I'd like to turn to the last point on slide nine. Bruce, if you can move to the next one.
You're about one minute left, just FYI.
I'll make this quick. You know, we I'll make this quick. You know, we have twelve commissions here in Lakewood, one of which addresses noxious weeds. Well, here's a noxious set of poles. The three of pictures on the bottom demonstrate the poles that have recently been installed or enhanced here in Lakewood. Uh, they're not very appealing to anybody. But I guess this is the existence we're going to have. Are we going to have these on every street corner? Are we going to have to roll over and play dead and say, "You can put them wherever you want"? I don't know. I mean, this is a very challenging and frustrating issue. So there's no ability for people to be involved on an ongoing basis with the city on this whole topic. And there may be some inroads for, for us to really generate some good ideas on how to make this a more sane development for Lakewood. And so on the last page here, I'm just going to throw a pitch out there for a commission. Bruce, if you can turn to the last page. A broadband commission which will guide Lakewood's future. Advise the city council and city staff on a variety of topics, and I'm not going to drain this page because I know I'm out of time. I'll go ahead and turn this over to the next speaker. Uh, thank you very much for letting me address the group tonight.
You bet. Thank you. So if you are one of the, the folks that, uh, was part of this, it looks like Kathy Sincere, if you want to lower your hand. Um, and then let's, here. We'll just go ahead and move into the next, uh, person lined up again. Three minutes is a time limit, and I'll let you know when you're thirty seconds, uh, when you're at thirty seconds. Mr. Uh, Clerk, if you want to go to the next one.
Yeah, we'll do zero, four, six, seven.
All right, zero, four, six, seven, it's your turn for public input. Give us your name and ward or address. We'll get you going.
Hi, my name's Diana LaSacco and a longtime Ward Three resident and business owner in Lakewood. Um, I'm speaking tonight on what few urgent things I can share with you in three minutes that I've learned after almost two years of investigating the impact of 5G wireless in our communities and why this is important to the look back of our wireless ordinance. If you listen to the wireless and telecom industry, there's simply no problems and it's full speed ahead. However, my investigations found concerning questions and pitfalls. Uh, turning a blind eye to these pitfalls would be to disregard the threats and risks to our safety and our security. Uh, why has the wireless industry not addressed the security flaws pointed out by the Government Accountability Office, all the while continuing to roll out 5G? 5G is a hacker's paradise, according to former FCC Chairman Wheeler. The same narrative is echoed across many tech websites. If current radiation emission standards are so safe, why did the GAO ask the FCC to reassess the current emission standards? The Environmental Health Trust filed an eleven-thousand-page brief, taking the FCC to court for ignoring the extensive evidence submitted to the agency on current RF standards. If the wireless industry wants us to believe how safe their product is, then why won't a single insurance company insure against RF emissions? And why has there been an apparent attempt and effort to shield the industry from any liability? Why are legislators calling for mandates urging providers to install lifesaving backup power so cell service isn't lost during fire or major storms? A Colorado lightning mitigation company stated our electrical codes are out of date and proper grounding of these towers is a major concern concerning we get five hundred thousand lightning strikes a year in Colorado. Numerous states are establishing commissions to study the health and environmental effects of 5G. Why, if there's no concern? Until this technology fixes its problems, there are potential risks to residents and businesses. Our citizens count on you to regulate public health and safety. You owe it to notify our residents and businesses like mine so that we can make informed judgments about how much of the risk we wish to assume, especially since the industry continues to claim there is no problem. We need to demand periodic testing. Your hands are not tied when it comes to infrastructure safety or data security or aesthetic citing or supporting a commission to study the growing evidence of health and environmental risks. Thank you, Councilor Abel, for requesting the one-year look-back review to our wireless ordinance. I urge you to request continuing reviews. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Oakworth.
All right, Stephen, give us your name and address or ward. We'll get you going with your three minutes. Just press star six to unmute. You're up. Mr. Oak, Oakworth, you are up, star six to unmute. Okay, Mr. Room, we'll skip that and go to the next, please.
Andrew Procope.
Procope. Press star six, name and address, name and ward. We'll get you going. You are unmuted and ready to roll. Mr. Procope.
Hello?
Yep.
Hello?
You're unmuted. Yes, sir.
Offline. I just wanted to pay attention to this matter because I know you're sorry about it. We got, uh, Friday night, the message from, uh, KUSHYAB, said to withdraw these missiles, technicians, and so on. I think we did not plan to end with the two, but we, uh, then got a message, uh, the public one the next morning, which he said, maybe we could add it, we withdrew our missiles from Turkey. We then, as you know, issued a statement that, uh, we couldn't get that deal.
So, Mr. Procope, we're not getting back action. You're not coming through very clear and I heard something about transmissions from Turkey.
Oh, there's a good deal of complexities to it. Uh, if the, uh, all of these missiles, technicians, had a sensation of, uh, suspicious activity by them, well, we just have to set up satisfactory procedures to determine what is the action we carried out. So I would think that, uh, if we can do that, we, uh, find our stress advanced, even though maybe only one more chapter on our long story as far as the issue is concerned. All except, uh, that, uh, we're going to invade.
Okay, looks like you muted yourself. So, all right, Sharon, we'll move on to the next.
Five, six, two, seven.
Our five, six, two, seven, good evening, name and address or name and ward.
Hello, this is Lynn Judson, eighteen oh five South Van Gordon Street, Lakewood, eight oh two, two, eight. Um, I'm in Ward Four. Um, thank you, Council. Can I be heard? Do you hear me clearly?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, first of all, I wanted to express my appreciation to City Council and to, to all of you for, um, helping to implement this in a way that's acceptable to residents. I think, um, I want to express the community's appreciation for, um, putting in to the ordinance, the six-hundred-foot spacing between, uh, standalone wireless cell facilities in rights-of-way. And, um, I heard what was said tonight, but if we can try to keep that in without too many exceptions, I know it's preferred by the residents um, for many reasons, including, you know, aesthetic, but also, um, exposure if we find there are health risks. Um, also for the, we appreciate, um, the provision about preferentially located, locating wireless cell facilities outside of recrea, of residential areas whenever possible. And I heard about what was said too earlier, but if we can try to, um, target that goal that the residents, um, tried so hard to notify their city council representatives about, and when we added that to the ordinance. So if we could try not to make exceptions, but to keep that in the ordinance and to try to target those goals, that would be greatly appreciated. I also noticed that in preparing this, that, um, I'm concerned about the radio frequency emissions. We don't really know all the health effects, um, and we, we can't legally consider them, I suppose, at this point, but just know that there are studies academic, National Academy of Science, Dr. Davis, showing that the emissions may be linked to cancers of the brain, acoustic nerve of the ear, heart arrhythmias, infertility, and neurologic issues such as insomnia, headaches, and so forth, tinnitus, ringing in the ears. Um, so before I talk about, too much about dangers, I mean, that's a pot, potential danger, and I, I wanted to consider adding a requirement that I think is legal because Fort Collins has it. They, uh, okay, they ask in their application that the applicant, um, state under penalty of perjury that all their cell facilities are, uh, shall comply with federal standards for radio frequency emissions. I'm suggesting that we might put in a similar statement on the application and also, um, have a way to monitor, uh, the ongoing facilities, uh, like hire an independent third-party RF engineer. Um, there's also the fire danger that was pointed out and debris and ice fog, but I did want to say, I just want to say one more thing, if I could, um, please, um, the, we are in favor of, of very good internet and broadband services. We are just trying to do it in a safer, faster, and more secure way by, um, providing it through fiber optic to the premises, which is much faster and much more, less, um, apt to have cyber attacks, as well as, uh, shielding us from health effects because the signal goes through a cable instead of through the air. So I just want you to know that we do favor that. Thank you.
Good night.
Zero, two, nine, three.
All right, caller zero, two, nine, three, if you unmute, give us your name and address or ward. Oh, two, nine, three, if you want to unmute, we'll start to three minutes, please.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Give us your name and address.
Thank you. It's your time tonight. I'd like to, uh, echo.
We can't hear you. I think you maybe have two devices on. So if you want to turn one of them off. Not very well.
I think she just dropped there.
Okay. So, Mr. Oakworth, let's try and get you started again. Maybe you got your technical difficulties figured out. Star six, Mr. Oakworth, and name and address, name and ward, either or, we'll get you going. Star six to unmute. Okay. Anybody else in the queue wish to speak? Please raise your hand if you have not already had the opportunity. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public input and, um, go ahead and go to council questions regarding the, the update that Mr. Goldstein presented. Mr. Skilling.
Just quickly, uh, Ben, Mr. Goldstein, is there any overlap here between conversations that may or may not occur in the future about, um, the city ownership of poles? And the issues with the Excel polls? Is there, does that impact this discussion in the future at all?
Uh, potentially. It, it's certainly something we're, we're looking at more broadly. Um, there, there's a potential, um, that the acquisition of the Excel polls from a street lighting standpoint might also help reduce poll clutter in a long-term 5G deployment standpoint, um, if we controlled that vertical asset. More broadly, um, and this is a little off of the 5G topic, but more broadly, controlling vertical, vertical asset, we think is a benefit to the city, whether it's vehicle charging or whatever the world might bring, um, having control of those assets, um, we think could be a benefit, um, from a lot of standpoints.
Thanks, sir.
Two quick questions for me, Mr. Goldstein. One was, there was a question about codification and cleanup of the ordinances that actually might be for our, our city attorney's office, but I do believe that was taken care of as accurate.
It is accurate, and, and sorry, I didn't address it in my initial comments. Uh, we, we really do appreciate, um, the residents taking such a hard look at it. Um, they, they presented nineteen areas of focus or issues or, or items they wanted us to look at. Of the nineteen, we concur that three, um, three items were missed during final codification. They were in staff's notes from the meeting. When the notes went over for codification, there was human error, um, and those, those were missed. Um, there were three words in a non-sub, sub, 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 sorry, I can't say that word right now, uh, in a not important section of the code. Um, they were in the purpose and intent section. That said, staff does not, uh, take it lightly. We looked at it. Um, unfortunately, it was a human error thing that's really hard. Um, uh, but one of the things we've started doing is meeting after, uh, regular council meetings to ensure that everyone's on the same page, talking through the multiple departments that touched the enactment of the code. Um, in this case, it, it was just missed for those three words, although it was a very complex red line that was put through and, and, you know, it was ninety-nine percent right. Um, so there, there were three words of a thirty-page document that were missed. Um, so don't, don't think that there were huge omissions. That said, we do take it seriously. We feel bad about it. Um, and they are protected now, and we appreciate the residents bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. And my, my, my next question has to do with the, the group that you are part of, which, uh, I forget the acronym, but
CCUA.
CCUA, so CCUA is, is an advocacy group for local government. Is that, does that? And so you follow the state and federal, um, legislation and try to advocate on behalf of the communities that you represent. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and, and Mr. Whitaker might even be able to speak to this better than I can because he has more familiarity with the group. But, um, they, I believe, were, and, and thus Lakewood, because we're a member of the group, were a party in the recent ruling. Is that correct, Mr. Whitaker? Yes, so that is correct. So Lakewood has been lobbying FCC, um, as a member of CCUA to, again, like I said earlier, try and maintain our home rule authority on this matter. It's just not working, nor is it for any other city, large or small.
The other two opportunities for city council would be through the Colorado Municipal League or through the NLC, which is the National League of Cities, which I believe, uh, Mr. LeBert spoke into this, NLC does have a committee in regards to, uh, broadband that does advocacy as well.
So, and I, I think NLC might be the more appropriate, you know, just as we don't really control the health impacts, the state doesn't either. Um, they're, they're superseded by federal law on that as well. Uh, so I think, you know, for residents who are interested, and we have this on our website, we have direct link to the FCC so that they can like, uh, put, put a complaint in against the FCC or, or any rulemaking. We try and make it as easy as we can for residents so that they know the appropriate avenues and they know that it's not city council, um, who, who's making these rules.
Great. Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Springsteen.
Well, the first thing that really bothers me is that these, these folks have spent countless hours on this. Countless hours putting together presentations and things they want to say to us. Countless hours putting together presentations and things they want to say to us. And somehow we cannot figure out how to get them in for three minutes of public comment. And I want to say to the people who couldn't get in, you can call me on my phone. Ask Diana what my number is, if you know her, and she can tell you, or Lynn Judson. And I will put you on since the city can't seem to figure out how to, for whatever reason. And I hope I don't get called a lunatic for saying that, Mayor.
No, but you're not, you're not accurate. Everybody's had the opportunity to call in, so I'm not sure why.
I have the floor, Mayor. So we, what I'm hearing is us blowing off these people who have legitimate gripes and concerns about how we did, how we handled the ordinance and the red line. And to say that we did it ninety-nine percent correct and there were like three words off is completely condescending them and blowing them off and what their concerns are. Because they have been coming back to me for months and months with more and more research and more, and asking us for, to take a look back at our ordinance as we said we were going to do within a year's time and asking why it hasn't been reviewed. And so to just blow it off like it's no big deal is not, it's not an acceptable response for these people. We have to have target goals. We have to make what we're doing meaningful. We have to demonstrate how we're going to enforce what our goals are. And so notification, for instance, is an important goal. I heard them ask for us to join in the children's health defense lawsuit to fight for local control. Now, this should be a very, very big issue for us, not just with 5G, but with everything we do, federal and state preemption. And I talked to the people at the National League of Cities who are fighting for this issue on 5G and who are fighting for local, local rights. And they told me that that is a very, very big issue and a growing issue. And so we are seeing a vacuum of our power to the federal and state government. And that should be a very big deal to us, especially when it comes to our health. And so, you know, I've been hearing talk of city council taking positions on various things that I certainly didn't vote to take positions on, like certain house bills. And so that, that's a whole nother issue. We need to decide what we're actually taking positions on as a council. But I think this is one that is worthwhile, preemption of local rights. Whether it be for 5G or something else, is a local, is a relevant position to take. I met with the mayor of Chattanooga, Tennessee, when I was at the NLC conference. And he said that they put fiber optics throughout his city. And he told me how they handled it. And it's possible and people are very, very happy with what happened there. And that's a large municipality. And so I think, why can't we look at that option? Why do we just blow these, these ideas off that these people have? And so, you know, basically I'm saying, we need to have a study session. We need to allow these people who presented to us who know more than anybody we can find and they've done it for free. They're willing to, to educate us. We need to be able to ask them questions and, and look in depth at what, what they've turned up and how we can fight this along the way in terms of preemption. So, thanks.
Mr. Abel.
Thank you. Mr. Goldstein, I find it very interesting that in your memo and your comments tonight, XL and Belmar are kind of putting roadblocks in the way of these wireless communication devices. Belmar, you mentioned, is not interested in, the management company is not interested in changing out lighting poles or new ones that would accommodate such facilities. And XL is also being reluctant. How do they, how does that stack up legally? Have they been challenged? I know they're not governments, but they certainly seem to be putting obstacles in the path. So how does that work legally? Any idea, or Mr. Graham?
I'm, I'm happy to answer it if you're okay, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Yeah, so I think perhaps I, I didn't give the full picture. So yes, XL Energy is making it more difficult for, for providers to utilize existing vertical infrastructure, so a street light pole. Or Belmar saying, yeah, aesthetically, we like our lights and those aren't going to work with a cell tower. That, that really doesn't impact the cell companies at all. What it means is there's going to be more poll clutter for us. They're still going to put a pole, then might put it ten feet from a street light pole. But they're gonna, they're still going to reach their saturation that they need for their coverage maps. So it's really more of an impediment in our goals and your goals as a council that you expressed in reducing poll clutter and minimizing visual blight in front of a residential property. So from a cell coverage standpoint, it's not impacting them at all. They're, they're just applying for application of a standard poll and accomplishing everything they want in that way. It's impacting us as a city.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's interest in this. I guess after looking at all of the public comment and the people that have weighed in on this, they really understand this issue probably more than any of us on council. And I'm very much intrigued with the idea of a commission. I'd also, I don't know if a study session is the right format, but perhaps a workshop so that we could have speakers from the city and also speakers that came tonight where there could be questioning and answers in a more free-form kind of format. It's apparent to me that our ordinance needs to have some tweaking to it. And I don't know that, I don't know how we want to go about doing this, but it does need to be done. I am concerned with the statements that we can't do anything that would impact health. I'm not sure how to address that, but it does seem to me that the obligation and responsibility of a municipality is this health, safety and welfare of their residents. Somehow that has to be addressed. Also, it was stated that insurance companies will not get involved here with, to insure. You know, there's, there's something there that we need to understand more why that is and if that's true. I, I don't doubt that Diane LaSasso was, was being incorrect. But surely they, there's a reason why the insurance companies won't get involved. So it sounds like there's a liability issue someplace. I do believe that we, we do need to have periodic testing of these sites just to see what the admissions are. You know, machinery breaks, maybe the signal isn't strong. Maybe it's stronger than what it should be. And, but that actually does need to be addressed. I don't have a problem with that. The cybersecurity to me is a huge deal. Our world has changed. And all we need to do is look at some of the cyber attacks within the last four or five months. We cannot take this one lightly. Whatever it is that needs to be done to address that, we need to do that in honest and forthright way. That is something that I'm actually very concerned of personally. And what would it take for us as a city to put more emphasis in fiber optics? To me, it does make more sense if things are underground, you don't have the same exposure, if you will. And I'd like to know how we can get going in that direction and what it would take. And of course, we need to continue as Council Enable did for this time to have ongoing yearly look backs on that and that needs to be something that needs to be continued in this ordinance. This can't be taken for granted. There are a lot of people that have concerns, not just in our city, but nationwide. We need to pay attention to that because once you, once you go too far, it's too late. It's better to go slowly with some things. Thank you.
Mr. Biedler.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I thank you for, for our citizens who have come forward to speak to us tonight. I really appreciate all the research and hard work that they've done and the expertise that they have shown, they have in this subject, which is, I think, admittedly a complex subject. It involves a lot of science as well as matters of law. And, and I don't think any of us can really say we understand it all or know it all. I certainly don't. And so I appreciate their coming forward. I certainly echo the comments of my co-counselors on this. And I, and I do think that it's something that we probably need to continue to, to be looking at. As the laws change, as the, you know, as we get new court cases and so forth. You've also got the political side of lobbying and I think we need to be staying on top of that as well. So that's another component. And then, you know, we just need to be continuing to, to review developments. I think our, I mean, I want to, you know, congratulate our staff. I think they've done a really good job of taking this very complicated subject and trying to reduce it down one into a, some sort of a workable ordinance at this point, which may or may not be perfect, I'm sure it's not, and that probably is going to need some work as we go, as we move along. So I think with all of those things said and looking at the fact that this isn't something that needs to be done immediately, I mean, I think, as I understood from, from our deputy city manager that things are moving fairly slow right now for various reasons. It gives us a little bit of time to, you know, gives us a little bit of breathing room to study this a little more. I'm wondering if wouldn't, maybe one possibility would be to send this to our LAC and in lieu of a, creating a new commission. Since we've already got the liquid advisory committee to advise us on various and study on various issues, why this wouldn't be one that they, that they could take a look at. And then as far as our citizens who are really interested in this, I know we've always got openings on the LAC. I, we, I interview for those. Every couple of months, we sit down and interview for more of those openings. So if some of our citizens maybe would want to volunteer for the LAC and we could put them on whichever subcommittee, I don't know which one would be the most appropriate to take a little more, a little closer look at this and bring us back some, some recommendations. Seems to me it's, you know, it's a subject that's, might be appropriate for that. I mean, we do other, we do other research kinds of questions that we send to LAC and they, they love, seem to love to sink their teeth into it. And with the right people on there, they would already have a head start. So that's just one thought I would throw out there. I yield the floor. Thank you.
So council, just a quick check in, does council want to do a study session on this topic? Okay, so I'm not seeing a consensus to do that. Does council want to send this to the LAC? So I'm not getting a consensus on that either. You know, at, at the end of the day, and there was a comment made that while we may not be experts, we actually do employ experts and I think Mr. Goldstein has been a great and knowledgeable person who does advocate. And there's just a certain level of trust and you're not going to be able to get to a point unless you're dealing with the same facts or the same reality of what the city can do and can't do. And so no matter how much you study this, no matter how much you don't want this or want it, there are certain realities. But what we do know is things are changing, that we're going to continue to advocate for local control, that we could see challenges in the future and we're going to stay on top of them. And I think that, to me, is super reasonable and makes sense. And so I want to thank Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Whitaker again and our team of folks that are engaged on this. Ms. Johnson, you have the last word.
Thank you. I appreciate that. The suggestion was made also to have a commission. Or I suggested a workshop where we could all of us get input from the folks that testified tonight. And to me, it's very apparent that this ordinance does need to have some tweaking. I guess I just don't want to see us drop this. There are some changes that do need to be made. I feel very comfortable with taking a better, a bigger deep dive in the cybersecurity issue. That to me is a real concern. But with the workshop, we could have a more free flow of information where there would be questions and answers, back and forth. And personally, I think Ben would be awesome to help lead that. Again, I have concerns about our, our exposure as far as insurance. And I guess I'm just not willing to drop this. I would like to see, since it's been voted down not to take it to the LAC, to have a workshop where all of us can get more engaged and ask questions. Although I know that Ben is very knowledgeable, some of the things that our residents have brought to us, they've been studying this to a point that I'm not sure any of us can, can understand. And I'm not sure that the staff actually has that kind of expertise as well. I don't know. But I think at a workshop, it would be very helpful to at least have more back and forth in questions answered. Thank you.
So would council like to do a workshop? Is there a consensus on a workshop? So there's not consensus there. Does council want to create a special commission to deal with broadband? So there's no consensus there. Again, I think Mr. Goldstein produced a memo that went out to city council that took into consideration all of the broadband council's recommendations. And I thank them for their engagement and I know they're going to continue to be engaged. Mr. Goldstein told us what we can and can't do. And, and this perpetuation of that our ordinance needs something that can't even be articulated by folks that say it needs it, isn't jiving. So Ms. Johnson, and then we're going to move on to the next subject.
Thank you. What would it take for the city to start putting more energy into going into the direction of fiber optic? It sounds to me, from everything I'm hearing, that that's a much safer way and it's a faster type of communication as well.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to address that?
Yeah, and certainly you're probably familiar with Chattanooga because they have been a national model. And if you are familiar, maybe you can talk to the costs involved there.
Yeah, I I think one thing that's uh important for council to understand is that we actually have very good um two-premise service right now. So unlike a rural area, um, where you have concerns about broadband deployment, you may not like Comcast or CenturyLink or one of the providers, but most of the Lakewood residents are going to have over a hundred megabits per second. Um, some might even have the ability for gigabit uh service right now. Um, so I don't know that the city entering the broadband space um would would change the equation at all. I think it's also important to point out that I know that it gets confusing with the different types of technology, but um broadband to the premise, so um fast, really fast internet to your house is different than being able to drive down the road and ha- carry on a conversation on your cellphone as you're bouncing from tower to tower to tower to tower as you drive down the road. One of the things that I think, you know, economic development folks, um, or realtors would say is that connectivity is really important. So part of that connectivity picture now, particularly for younger folks, is they don't want to pay Comcast. They're already paying a cellphone provider, Verizon, AT&amp;T, whoever it is. And that's their main form of communication. So I think, you know, that I I understand that they're like the broadband task force, doesn't want to see more deployment, but there are also many residents in the community that are probably more silent on this issue that are looking for greater connectivity. And and whether that's broadband connectivity to the premise and and really, really fast internet or really high-quality cellphone connection where they can stream music as they're driving through the city or their kids can watch YouTube at home on their cellphone. Um, that also becomes a socioeconomic thing in that lower-income residents might only have a cellphone as their form of internet. So there, it's it's a really complex issue, but I do think it's important to understand that broadband does not solve the cellphone issue, that those are, those are two different technologies. And even if we had amazing broadband paid for by the city throughout Lakewood, residents are still going to want cellphones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, Mr. Goldstein, well, you're going to stay with us because you're going to take us to the next, the next topic. But Mr. Whitaker, thank you for tuning in to this portion tonight. And now move into item five, mid-year dashboard update on city council.
Yeah, um, so I know, I know it's late. Um, I'll, I'll attempt to go through this pretty quickly and then really leave it open to council for questions. In the staff memo, you may recall that uh I asked uh city council to let us know in advance if there were any specific questions you wanted me to address tonight. And and I'm not aware that any came in. Um, so if one pops into your head tonight, I'm happy to address you. You're also welcome to follow me later, the email, or just reach out um and in any way. And and I can fill you in on an update of a particular item. Broadly, uh, if you, if you noticed on the sheet, there's a lot more green than the last time we did this update. So I'm pleased to share that. Also, uh, if you looked at the description of status column, it's that far right column. Um, many of the blue items uh that still show the status as in progress um are going to be um, either they're an ongoing item um and and part of it is how the goal was phrased, so continue to do X. Um, in that case, it it's really difficult to say it's done, um, continue. Uh, for instance, under COVID nineteen, uh, city council will advocate on behalf of City of Lakewood to ensure state and federal resources are directed to support city operations. Well, that's something that is is really an ongoing task. Um, so I think you all are continuing to do that. We didn't really feel comfortable marking that as complete. COVID's still going on. Um, so you'll see that still marked as in progress, but I think you all and we could consider that a success. I think a lot of resources have gone in to the City of Lakewood as uh work was illustrated by Mr. Smith during his presentation. Um, we had one item that I'll uh note, uh, that to be scheduled. We don't see this one often indicated on there. That's that purplish color. Um. Mr. Smith also said that, you know, that this presentation has been scheduled. Um, the reason it's said to be scheduled is because this is a Q two update. So uh, so this was at the close of the second quarter. That's since been scheduled and and you all will be seeing that that will be marked complete once that presentation happens. Um. Moving on to the back page, uh, something that is unique uh in this update is the distinct work items and um those are some of the, you you all indicated there were four distinct work items that um were separate from the continuation of the 2020 goals. Um, so bringing it on back to coal facts, um, a broad list of path needs, which also kind of coincides with one of the uh transportation safety ones. Uh, clarify language uh related to the street growth initiative. And then the list of LAC projects. So the LAC projects has been completed. The other three are in progress, but staff does anticipate um those being done with with maybe the exception of the the fourteen twenty-seven discussion because when that was brought to council, the decision was made not to to move forward with that. So um, part of that is on council of not knowing um what direction you all want to go. But uh, I I think we're in really good shape and um should should have pretty high completion of all of these tasks. There might be a few that due to COVID and and funding and some ongoing things related to that are are still going to be a challenge for us to accomplish. But um, you should feel very proud of the work you all have done and the work that staff's done thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. So I'm going to go to uh public input for this particular item. And I see that we have two people with their hands up. So this is related to council goals.
Uh, first is Maurice. E.
All right, good evening, Maurice. If you give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going. Star six to unmute. Maurice, star six to unmute. Okay, and then next is Andrew Prokopie. That was, uh, we tried to get in a couple of times under broadband or under 5G. Andrew, do you wish to speak on this item before us on council goals for 2021? Press star six to unmute. Star six to unmute. Okay, I will close this portion. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Goldstein? Mr. Abel?
Thank you. Not really a question, but I just wanted to uh say that staff has done a really good job of defining the parameters uh that we placed on these goals in February, and uh I I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on council? Ms. Springsteen?
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to remind the public and make record that these goals were made without my input for two years in a row. And there's so many things that seem so much more important to me than bring neon back to coal facts, frankly. Like keeping people employed in our police department, like I have been trying to speak out about. So um, just wanted to make that point.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Goldstein, for that update.
My pleasure.
Uh, I'll now go to uh council committees. Any of the chairs wish to give a quick update on their committee, just committees only? Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. Yes, um, I want to thank Councilor Franks Harrison and Mayor Paul. Uh, we, and uh also Councilor Johnson for sending me her questions or comments. Um, she had a conflict with our last meeting at the Housing Policy Commission. Um, we came up with some issues, and there is an ordinance that is going to go uh through legal. So we're still on track so far to uh have a first reading August ninth. But if they need a little bit more time, we're going to take the August ninth first reading, cancel that, and make the second reading, that would have been eight twenty-three, the first reading. Um, so I wanted to let everyone know that 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 may have to be switched. But it's, I really think that those people on that committee, um, a lot of, a lot of good work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Biede?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to do a quick report with the Budget Audit Committee. We will be meeting virtually on July twenty-eighth at five thirty. And of course, I'll, I always welcome other members of council, even though they're not on the necessarily on the committee. We uh really appreciate them attending and um uh giving us their input. We always welcome them. We have a fairly robust agenda. We're going to be receiving the uh financial audit, the annual financial audit. So we'll be talking about that. We're also going to be talking about um doing an RFP to uh hire a new auditor. The contract with our existing auditor is is up now. So we're going to have to discuss uh the process of hiring another auditor um or hiring a an auditor. Uh, we're going to get a report from uh Economic Development and and Robert Smith on the status of Bellmar and kind of what's going on there uh as it may have an impact, financial impacts on the city. Uh, we're going to also be talking about uh the changes that we'll be looking at for the budget book this year. Um, so we're going to be, uh, we are going to be making some changes, including a letter from the uh audit, from the Budget Audit Committee, uh, helping um identify some of the more significant issues in the budget. And then we'll be um also discussing the the ballot items that we we passed uh uh or that we uh passed upon this last month or so. And just as kind of a follow-up and clo- clo- closing up of of things. And then um, and then also we'll be uh discussing the uh upcoming budget review as we get into the budget um season now and the bu- budget process in the next few months, we'll be talking about how how we're going to do that and getting public involvement and council involvement and review and so forth. So we've got a pretty robust agenda, and you're all welcome.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Abel?
Thank you. Uh, the Campaign Finance Committee uh came to council with some suggested uh updates of our ordinance. Uh, that has been put on hold at the suggestion of the uh city attorney. So um, stay tuned and we'll get to that eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I do not have a committee report, but may I just report on a recent loss for our community?
Sure, I'll give you a re- a personal privilege, you bet.
Thank you. This last week, our our state and actually our nation lost a great humanitarian and statesman. Colonel Dick, uh, Sergeant passed on last week. Um, it's a real loss for for thousands of people, actually. And the celebration of life has not been set as far as a date. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you for sharing. All right, with that, I don't see anybody else. I appreciate councils uh tonight. We'll be back on the twenty-sixth. Um, certainly, if you have any questions beforehand on the agenda or anything that staff can try to assist you with, please get those in. Hope you all have a wonderful week, and thank you for your time.